All right, welcome to the town acting main planning board meeting for October 20th, 2022. I'll stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the five United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it should have individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jason was so kind enough to print out some minutes for us, but I'm sure enough's...
There's a lot in there if you guys don't, you can review them and we can deal with it at the next meeting, just because there's not much in there.
It's really thorough.
Yeah, I'd like to read it.
Okay.
So we'll do them next time?
Yeah.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
A motion that we tabled the minutes provided until the next, for review till at the next meeting.
Second.
On my favor. All right, first up tonight would be West Shore Acres, West Shore Drive, map 128, lot 007-001. Application for subdivision revision to final approval. Joe Stanley. Likes us that much, he keeps coming back.
As I said, I bet you guys thought you got rid of me for a bit, but I want an excuse to come back. Quickly, I'm back with the same plan that everyone approved two weeks ago. Just what I had noticed after the fact is we had made the modifications to the, you know, the buffer areas around the exterior of the lot. We had added the notes 16 and 18 regarding the side and rear wooded buffer areas, which I think everybody agreed was a great idea, but I realized after the fact that I had forgotten to remove note 13, which contradicted that and said no, you know, the note that said no restrictions were planned in regards to tree cutting. So I had left that note 13 on there that said there was no restrictions regarding tree cutting, and then I added restrictions on 16 and 18. Noticed that after you guys had voted to approve it and sign it, so I brought the plan back with the note 13 removed. The note 13 is still there, it just says note removed, see note 16 and 18. So we didn't, you know, get the, you know, the numbering of all the notes all transposed or everything, but I'm hoping you guys will be willing to sign this new revised version of the plan just to get that contradictory note off of there, and that way enforcement doesn't have a nightmare on their hands later on when two notes say that there are restrictions and one note say there isn't one. So I'm hoping the board will vote to make that change for me here, for luckily I caught it before we recorded it, so it hasn't made it to registry yet. If anyone would like to see it. But now that I've said it, probably everybody remembers that note 13 where I had just said the note 16 was proposed. I had left that on there and then...
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Revised that.
So procedurally, we can just vote to accept this change?
I don't know, I think we might want to make a motion to reconsider our approval or something like that. I don't know.
Why wasn't he here last week?
I would say if it's not changing any material or substantive elements of the review, and it's simply to clarify, essentially a typo that should have been struck through for that original note, I was going to suggest you probably wouldn't even need a motion, you could just sign the corrected plan that as long as everyone agrees that it's not making any changes to what you voted on the last time this was here. If you want to be extra crystal clear, you can make a motion to do that, but it's more of an administrative change than anything procedurally or related to the standards.
Thank you. I'm good with it.
I'm just gonna probably shouldn't read through the notes to make sure there's no other changes to it before we accept it, but does anybody have a copy of the other?
Did you not two weeks ago?
I did, but these notes are different in that he changed one note plus, I don't know, just double checking the other notes. It's off his, maybe my suggestion, but I don't know if it's necessary, but it's just, that's all I can think we would do other than accepting.
There is a third copy there of the one.
I think my copy's out in my trunk.
Me too. Long selling field changed me downstairs. Both the way I had a couple maps, so.
But no, just change the one note, and then you'll see the revision date reflected down on the title block in the lower right. Those will be the only two modifications. Have to get my other map.
Sounds good proofreaded. Well, I was in here last week, so I'm reading the buffer notes, but the rest is all the same except for the removing 13.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the revisions to the application for subdivision for West Shore Acres, map 128, lot 7-1.
A second.
On my favor.
Thank you. Signatures on two of them, one for me and one for Jason, that would do it.
Nineteenth?
Twenty.
Twenty.
That's your backup one?
Yeah. No, that's not the only one now. I got a backup in the trunk. That one's open now. I forgot having eaten a jelly sandwich.
Thanks for changing that, Joe. I didn't notice it, but I didn't really want to bug you about it since you'd already been so gracious in coming in so many times and modifying it.
Well, I appreciate it. I just pick it myself. It's one of those things I noticed maybe an hour before I got here, and then the client walked in and I forgot to make the modification. Look at these things 10 times, but I'd rather go on record this way. I could just see someone clear cutting the lot, pointing it.
Yeah. Right.
Thank you guys very much.
Are you gonna put in a flat file or the regular file?
I'm probably just gonna stick with the regular file.
This isn't on the agenda.
Oh, is this a, is it a different meeting on it?
It's not Murray.
Right.
No.
Okay. So this must be for next time then?
He said it's now.
Oh. Well, what's going on with the agenda?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll wait for Jason to come back. Have you guys reached Paul C. Murray? Have a good night.
Jason. That was the site lot that I missed, and then they were gonna, remember they had to do the volume redo?
Yeah, we approved them last time.
No, it's not the regular one, guys.
This must, this is just, the agenda is pretty much a duplicate of last time's agenda, probably.
So this is not being added, Jason?
No, that was, I forgot, I...
Yeah.
You see the address is right, but then I didn't change the names. The agenda's wrong on that one. It's just the names are wrong.
So it's Aaron. So that other one was approved?
Yes, we did. They fixed the volume and we muddled about trying to figure out how close they were to the late existing, but then still came up with a, I think it was 31 feet.
Right.
We, but then no closer than 31 for the new one and approved it. They had the septic detailed on there.
The, everything's right except for the name. It should be Aaron Wiswell or Wiswell. Sure, okay, so I apologize, guys.
All right. All right, next up is Aaron Wiswell, 60 Livingston Gublin Road, map 117, lot 054. Application for greatest practical extent.
I'm John Hutchins, and I'm representing Aaron and Alyssa Wiswell from this application. So yeah, so the existing camp on, they were proposing just to stay in the same footprint, mainly because of there is a, this water, it's on the peninsula, so there's water on three sides, and to move it straight back, there's a septic system back there, plus also the topography would require that you'd end up back behind the hill. This sits right on top of the hill right now, and you'd end up pushing it, by pushing it back, you'd end up back behind the hill. Then there is a septic system back there as well, and you'd be moving it too close to the septic system. So we're asking just to, just to leave it as is. We're gonna put, there's gonna be a full foundation underneath this, and we've already been through the PBR, and done the, the 30% expansion, and all that's in there.
Can you tell us what's, just quickly, the last map in the package, is this just showing that the owner, what is the last map in the package showing?
That was actually the, if you look at that last map, the insert on the right-hand side of that map is what I actually used for the site plan. The, Aaron has bought the lot, which is in that insert, but he's also has a purchase and sale for the rest of it. He'd like to eventually buy the, buy the rest of it. I put that map in there to show that that is the original map that is signed by the surveyor and so forth. It's, the site plan is just a close-up of the insert of that. I wanted to make sure that you saw that it was an entire, that's where it came from, that entire plan, and it was signed by a surveying, surveyor. Right now, Aaron only owns that piece on the peninsula at this point.
Okay, I guess that was kind of part of my question.
We're gonna need a signed signature.
Yep.
Capitulation.
Okay.
Do you actually know how the distance of the septic?
No, I'm not sure exactly how far back it is. It's in that parking area, the leach field's in the parking area, and the tank is somewhere between that parking area and the, and the building. But that wasn't located in this part of the survey, so I didn't put it on the map. I'm not sure where it is.
I'll provide the board with that next meeting.
Would they like to see a copy of it, where it's actually? Did this permit by roll go in?
It's not signed.
Yeah. For the, um... For the septic?
Can you clarify where Foss Road ends and Livingston Road begins?
Actually, can't quite see it. That thing's in the way. Yeah, there you go. So, yeah. This is Foss Road right here.
Right.
Livingston Gublin goes this way and then takes a sharp turn.
That what? What you just brought up. It's a graph of the drawing of the house.
So the floor area on the design you're making is actually going to be less? Is that correct? No, the floor, the floor area is going to be, um, let me see if I can get it, total for, no, we're gonna, we're gonna use the entire 30% expansion. We're gonna, it's, the floor area is 1,300, the existing floor area is 1,300. Oh, no, I take it back, it is slightly less, I'm sorry. Yeah, the floor is slightly less, but it's because the volume has increased and...
Right.
We're at the maximum volume, but we're not, we're not at the, at the maximum 30% expansion.
I just wanted to make sure that was what I was...
Nope, that's right. No, that is correct.
Yeah, I didn't hear him.
Was it submitted, Joe?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is required. That was a copy of one. I can get you a copy of this, one of the signed copy ones. That was, this is a copy that I had before I sent it off to the owner, and he signed it. He signed it and sent it into the DEP. DEP has a way of doing it online now, so he had to do it, he had to do that online. I can see if I can get a signed copy of it though.
So you put a note for yourself, or I can email you. You need to get the signed copy of the application?
Yep.
And a signed copy of the greatest practical extent?
Yep.
I think I said the greatest, I'm from everywhere, yeah.
What's happening to the lot coverage with the proposed home? You're taking out a, I note you're taking out a shed.
Yes. I believe the lot coverage is gonna be pretty much, I think it's gonna be the same. Or actually slightly less. It's gonna be slightly less, just like the, the, it's gonna be slightly less because of the square footage. The actual footprint of the building is less than the original.
Removing the shed. And the shed's coming out.
Including the shed, including, including that, we're removing the shed.
I'm sure it's just going over this. I couldn't make hide and hair out of it.
Yeah. Can you help us understand on this site plan map right here?
Yes.
The green outline with the verbiage line could be confirmed by boundary line agreement?
Mm-hmm.
And then also there's a, a blue area and a pink, pink area as well. Are those part of the, of the lot, or what's going on there?
Um, let me see, it says on that.
Blue appears to be open.
It's the leach field.
No, it's that the green area is a right-of-way.
Thought his line is the leach field.
The green area is a right-of-way, and the blue area is a, is a, is a proposed right-of-way for the next-door neighbor. That, you see that, you see there's a building that's right up near the, the lot line there, so it's a proposed right-of-way for them as well.
Do you know where that little shed is?
Right. This is the neighbor, the Drakes, and that blue one is a right-of-way for them.
Well, I was trying, yeah, all three of those areas, and they seem to be different.
This was something, this was something that was all done by the prior owner. That, that was all done back at the time when this, this map was produced, which was in 2013, December of 2013.
Did you include a new septic design in?
What's that?
Did you include a new septic design in the jacket?
No, he was gonna continue to use the septic that was there.
So we should have that design on file?
That's what I was saying.
I believe so.
Oh, okay. So, on this map, who owns the green, green outlined area?
My client.
Okay.
It's only a proposed right-of-way there.
Just looks kind of big for a right of way.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the deal was with that. That was, like I say, that was something that was... And I'm not... I'll have to find out. To my knowledge, it's never actually been given out as a right of way, that part.
Why is it proposed future leach field location? Use the same septic.
That's with the neighbor, right?
Right.
That's a right of way for the neighbor.
Right now, the proposed future leach field location, and that's with the neighbor in the blue section?
Because it says future leach field location.
Yeah, again, that was done in 2013. That map, that site map, was called created in 2013.
So there is a system there now. I'm just wondering if they're driving over or what's happening.
They're moving it from here to here, but we don't know if it happened or not.
Yeah, it's 2013, so I imagine that it would have. But if it's a right of way... I can't drive over it unless it has changed.
Right. It's going to be a funny detail.
Is it being proven that, right?
I don't know. I don't know. It is kind of tricky would be, in part, approving a site plan that had details of other properties that were outdated. We were just discussing if we approve this application, what that would entail for this year's site plan, provided if we're approving something that's actually has to do with the neighbor in, you know, in a roundabout sort of way. And whether or not the work indicated in this site plan has been done. So in which case, maybe, you know, negate us worrying about it.
We need an updated site plan.
Yeah.
We can't operate a 2013 site plan.
I'd love to see a topo too.
Yeah, it says no distances from the water.
How high up on the knoll are you?
It's right on top. It slumps off in all directions around the building.
What's the distance down to the lake?
Well, the closest one is 31 foot six. That's on that side. That's on this side.
I see that, but...
Elevation wise? I'm not sure. It's probably as much as 20 feet from the grade underneath the building down to the lake. It slopes off pretty good. It's up there pretty well. There wasn't any topo done as part of this.
Okay, and I had another little detail I noticed. There's two permits for... Two forms for the application. Now, on the first one, it says you're in the shore land. Any resource protection on the property not filled out. But on the second one, any resource protection on the property says yes. So I'm just curious.
Well, it's resource protection because it's within 100 feet of the lake.
Okay. I'm just why it's not consistent between the two forms.
I'm not sure. Which two are you looking at here?
I'm looking at the application for bet greatest practical extent. And then the...
Site information.
Yeah, the... Yeah. There's just a, you know, just a discrepancy there. I have to... Can you put some overlays on the map for us so we can see? I mean, no doubt they're in shore land, but... You want to just put the resource protection overlay just so we can...
Well, the resource protection would be like within 20 hours, 25 feet or something.
Okay. So it's that... This... Is it telling us there's steep slopes on the property? Is that what it's telling us? Because we're on number 54 with the blue dot, right?
Yeah.
So and there's the green on the upper left of the peninsula, which I think is indicating that some sort of RP right there. But what does it say? Oh, rat lands two or more acres?
No, that entire lot's not even...
Well, that's what seems to be what the resource protection chart indicates right there. Well, okay. Well? No, two or more. Just curious what's going on there. I mean, the yellow is the steep slopes, two or more acres. So it's sustained slopes over 20%. Two or more acres, but that's not on the law. But there is the green on the law. And it looks like we need to get an updated site plan that can answer several questions that we've come up with tonight. Which would be topo map, septic location.
The new house location, distances from the water.
He's saying he can't move it. The slope that it's on can maybe be...
I think, yeah, they're proposing the same footprint, I think. But... Maybe there would be some differences.
Well, I think we should do a sidewalk.
You do.
Verify that.
Okay, all right, well, let's...
Because we can verify that on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, that would help us with the topo too. But I am curious what is going on with the RP. Or maybe is it the... What is the... The blue is the 100-year flood plain?
Yes.
I don't even know why that's... If you go to that... I've been to this property, a budding property. That peninsula is actually pretty well raised, so I don't know how, why it's in a...
Well, that's part of the RP. The flood plain is part of his resource protection. So that makes sense. How about the purple grid at the tip of the peninsula?
That's rivers and great ponds, so when you go to the sidewalk, you'll realize that this peninsula is actually really... It's pretty high. I'm confused why it's even the flood plain itself.
Probably because it was on the FEMA map.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then what the green is. So we've got some...
Says it's wetlands on there, doesn't it?
Yeah, it says wetland, but it says two or more acres, which doesn't add up.
Yeah. And it's... I don't think it's really wetlands. There's actually a wall there that's in the water, so I don't think it's...
Like a retaining wall?
Yeah, there's some retaining wall there.
So this one shows your... This shoreline overlay shows your resource protection here in yellow. Doesn't seem to...
Well, that would be state RP. It's tricky because it's town RP and state RP. I don't think there's any state RP on there, except for the 100-year flood. Yeah. Well? Yes, schedule a site walk again.
Yeah, I think we need an updated site plan. I think we need some...
Signature.
Corrected forms with signatures. Yeah, I mean, we conduct a site walk. The greatest practical extent at 60 Livingston Goodwin Road, map 117, lot 054.
Checking. Figure out the date.
Right. Want to do it on a Saturday or...
Just because of the daylight?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, do we maybe want to see the date before we do the site walk? Or do we not care?
No, I think we could do it.
Okay.
I prefer you can schedule it for 29.
I keep doing it on 29. Well, what time?
What time? Are you available?
I've got a Tinder call meeting.
Where's your meeting?
Zoom.
Okay, so you have to be in your house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it early, early, 8:30. Doesn't bother me. It's up to... I'm up early, so I don't know. Depends what else is...
Get it out of the way.
You don't think there's enough light at 5 o'clock?
It didn't get dark until it was like 6 o'clock. You might be able to still squeeze.
When do they change?
November.
Are we changing?
I know, right? What's going on?
Yeah.
They changed it.
Next meeting is on the 3rd of November.
I think sunset's at 5:30. You want to do it on the 3rd?
Yeah.
At 5?
Sure.
Yeah, that works.
3:00 at 5?
You got that, John?
Yeah, site work.
I'll send you an email in the morning. Outlining the stuff that the board is...
I've also got it down too.
Yeah, it's a six we fall back on.
Okay.
For the time, so... Squeeze one more in before...
Yeah, it'll work. Work either way, right?
He said 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock on November 3rd.
Is that it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, next up, Matt Pepin or David Pepin, mineral extraction, H Road 220-007 and West Shore Drive 221-003. Application for mineral extraction.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? All right. Nice to see you all again. Sorry that I missed the last meeting, but I have caught up to speed with Kyle on what you guys discussed last time around. And me and Kyle have done a lot in the last few months to work on the application, based on a lot of the comments that we're hearing. Or we heard, you know, Drew and some of the sidewalks, some of the comments that we're seeing from Ben's memos. So we have worked on a few changes along the way. And we're really hoping that tonight, if possible, we can try to get this application deemed complete and try to move forward with trying to plan or schedule a public hearing. I did share two documents with Jason. Is that you're passing out right now?
One's got the traffic, the back and forth of the traffic study.
Yep.
The other one is just pretty much an approval statement or something stated that they are working on the archaeological thing. It should be completed in the next month, within a month or something like that. Is that correct?
So what I shared was, one thing was a quote that we got from the Archaeological Society, which to do an assessment of whether the historic, is it T. Smith Homestead, is on site or not. And so I shared that quote with you guys here tonight. And before we pull the trigger on doing that study, we just want to be 100% clear with the planning board that that is what you guys are looking for. Because it is going to be an expensive study to do. And we just want to confirm with you guys that that seems like it's going to cover the requirements for that part of the application, as far as from the archaeological perspective. The feedback that we had got previously was that if we could verify that that homestead wasn't on site, that we should be in really good shape as far as meeting the requirement in the ordinance for, you know, ensuring that we're not infringing on any archaeological sites out there. And then the other thing that we kind of did with the Marshall sharing with you is we spoke with a traffic engineer. Her name's Diane Morabito, and she's very well respected in this state of Maine. And she gave us a quote on doing like a... Essentially doing like a study of how we can improve safety at the entrance. And there are some details provided in her quote as far as what she would look at specifically. She makes some recommendations on signage, possibly on a turning lane. And there was a few other comments in her proposal. So we were also really hoping to discuss that proposal with you guys and make sure that that was going to be what you were looking for before we pulled the trigger with Diane. And Diane has said that as part of her study, she would be verifying site distance out there as well. She will not make a recommendation without personally doing that herself. So as part of her study, she would independently verify the site distance out there. We also have Dana Libby from Corner Post doing that. And at this point, Dana has told us that we'll have no problem achieving the site distance. We've got to trim some trees along the H Road to do that. And we're in the... Probably going to be doing that this week. And then Dana's going to go back out and he's going to verify that we have achieved the correct site distance, so...
But it was more than site distance that we were interested in, right? So she talks about doing a plan that'll review H Road for a half mile either side. And the site distance and a signage plan. And then she'll summarize that, but it doesn't talk about whether there's a need to address speed limits or the turning lanes you just mentioned. Or, you know, the overarching thing was we've assumed all along H Road was the best option for the trucks. But West Shore Drive is an option as well. And so we wanted her to, or an engineer, to say, you know, which is the better solution for the extra 100 trucks?
Okay.
If I could just introduce myself. Ben Smith, North Star Planning. I've exchanged emails with the applicant and the applicant's rep over the course of the project here. So there were just a couple things, I think, that it came down to back when, at the last meeting I was here in September. There was an August memo that really focused in on a couple things. One was the archaeological letter. a couple things. One was the archaeological letter that was submitted in July from the, the state about the potential for this archaeological resource on site. And the second was regarding traffic. And I concurred with the applicant's submission that this is not going to require DOT traffic movement permits or meet the level of local study, but I had suggested that the applicant provide some more info about H Road in particular and vicinity of that entrance. He knows the road better than I do, but based on my review, it, it doesn't seem like, it seems like it would be helpful, at least for the record, to have information around the width of that road and speed limits. I think that there's some grade, road grade that, that might pose an issue for loaded trucks entering or exiting the site, because there will be loaded trucks entering the site with materials to be processed on site. So that's the kind of information I was suggesting the board request in order to find the application complete. So it sounds like Diane Morabito is, is absolutely qualified to provide some of that information. I, I would not presume to say, you know, this is, you know, change a speed limit or add a turn lane. Like, I think that's absolutely up to the traffic engineer to look at the site and understand the traffic volumes and make some suggestions or to say simply that H Road is adequate at this location for the kind of traffic. So that's, I think, the, the kind of information that, that I would think the board would need to have from someone in order to make a finding on that standard about traffic.
I would agree with that. I think that she's very well qualified in her field and that she's going to go out there and do an assessment. And if she thinks that there's a safety issue and that perhaps the speed limit should be lowered, I think she's going to say, she's going to say that, I would hope.
Yeah, but I brought it up because that's not what, in her email to you, that's not what she said she's doing. It just needs to be expanded a little per what I said and what Ben just articulated in a better way than I did.
Okay. Well, let's hopefully try to gain a little clarity on exactly what you guys all agree on, so that I can get Diane started with this process, for sure. Speed limit seems to be a concern. Obviously, site distance, signage.
Turning lane.
Turning lane. Okay.
I think just, it's a more general question, but just the impact to the road from the extra hundred trucks a day is something that she could give us an opinion on.
That can get, that can turn into pretty, much more comprehensive study if you're trying to assess, like, look at the impact of trucks on a roadway like this. That's when you start talking about maybe a geotechnical engineer who's going to look at.
I'm thinking from a safety standpoint.
Safety standpoint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, I want her to give us an opinion on West Shore versus H Road as well.
Sure. Yeah, definitely. We can add that to. I mean, I don't think she's going to go out there and start trying to come up with site distance measurements on West Shore Drive. I think that she maybe would just drive down West Shore Drive and
She's an engineer.
General observations?
Well, she's an engineer. I mean, I can drive down
Right.
General observations, but she's trained to do this. So we, we'd want to hear her opinion.
Yeah. Okay. And we all, we all do realize that the only possible, the only way that we could have an entrance on West Shore Drive would be on the further side of the culvert, and we would have to utilize that culvert. Okay. Yeah.
It may, it may very well be worth a few minutes of an engineer's time to take a look at the overall site, but I have a strong inclination that accessing the project site off of the, the public road, keeping that kind of truck traffic out of a residential neighborhood is, is probably going to be the recommendation that comes back.
For people that live along H Road as well.
That is true.
Not as dense, but.
That is true.
And then there were other things. When you, you, you mentioned the archaeological report and the traffic plan, but are we not waiting for inland fisheries?
Well, we're waiting for DEP. Permits. We're waiting for them to apply for DEP permits. That's a whole thing in itself.
Yeah, but we're waiting for inland fisheries to.
Well, inland fisheries gave us the advice that we ask for a hundred-foot buffer on the two streams, whereas the map that they provided indicated seventy-five-foot buffer.
Right.
And I think that was most of the input I remember from IFW. Twenty-five feet, it seems like it would be an easy thing for the applicant to do, and it would be beneficial, especially the, the one stream where they're going to be crossing at.
I, I have no problem with adding the extra twenty-five feet. I'm not going to fight you guys on that whatsoever. And we certainly, we definitely have had inland wildlife and fishery do a full assessment on the site. And they've provided comments clearly already, so.
Well, I, I haven't seen those. I mean, I've seen your guys who've gone to them.
Kyle, you want to comment on that, Kyle?
Maybe this is what you're looking for. We don't, Kyle Jacobson. See you guys again. This is a memo that Gavin Paul J. has lost in my inbox. It's from the IFW applying. This is specific to the vernal pools on the site.
Right, because there was some discrepancy in the mapping as to which was which.
Yeah, apparently, okay, this is for a little while, but this is a memo from them and then associated, the associated sheets behind it that say, you know, each vernal pool on the site, whether or not it's even connected or not. And then included the map, which is from a different, which is from the original delineation by Stan Tech, just to show you which numbers, to reference the numbers. And then Jason, if you could pull up a sheet that I sent you earlier, V one or two. This speaks to the buffer impacts. I think it's the second one. I think you had it up. I saw V up on, yeah. So if we zoom in on this here, this is the site that you guys have seen. In this, in this IFW correspondence, they concur with Stan Tech's assessments that, on which vernal pools are significant and which are not. The only significant vernal pools are the ones with the buffers around them now. And the only place we're impacting the buffer with an extraction area or with stockpile, just site disturbance area, is where it's kind of orange right there. And if you scroll over to the left-hand side of Plan Left, so you have to drag to the right, yep, just so you can see that table down there on the left. So those are the two, those are the two buffers that were impacting SVP, which is significant vernal pool twelve, DB and thirteen. There's a total area of the pool, a total area of the buffer, impact area of the buffer, normal impacts in the pool, but, and then we're allowed twenty-five percent of the PPR. We still have this in the state, but we're well below the twenty-five mark, so we have to see what exactly we see.
This, there's a discrepancy though, because Stan Tech identified this as a SVP.
I know. If you review the IFW correspondence, it's not, they ruled that it's not a, it's like the second-to-last page in eight and a half by eleven. And that is, if you look on the map, I believe that is, that is number eleven. The highlights are mine in there just because there was changes to the site map, but number eleven, S, Pool eleven is, is determined not to be significant due to its being man-made.
So John, just, sorry, just to clarify, this is new information that we have received and, which gives us more thorough understanding of the vernal pool situation on site. And on the first site walk, we went over to extraction area number two, and you guys, where the wash plant area was going to be, you guys wanted to look at where we were going to infringe upon those vernal pool buffers. Well, we've learned now that we're actually not going to be infringing on any vernal pool buffers in the wash plant area, which is, I think, good news for everybody. Kyle's saying the only vernal pool buffers that we're going to infringe.
Significant.
Significant vernal pool buffers we're going to infringe upon are in this extraction area number one. And as you can see, it's a pretty, pretty limited amount of space there that we're, we're looking to work in.
So is this the map you're seeing that's the, the most outdated and accurate?
No, that's the map. That's just the map I included to show you which vernal pools are referenced in the IFW letter. The IFW letter didn't come back with the map. This up here would be the most updated with the pink. The pools, the wetlands in the pink representing significant vernal pools and the two-hundred-foot buffers setback from them.
So this, this map was put out by Saint Germain?
Uh, yeah.
I just got this in today?
Today, late, late today. So this, obviously, all this would cascade through our entire plans, and we, you know, we still need to issue an updated set. Also, as you guys were discussing earlier, by the stream crossing, this reflects a hundred-foot setback at the stream crossing. And then some site changes by the building that were requested. And then I, we have some additional questions for the board, what the board would like to see and in that area. If you'd like to maybe switch to the other sheet there. Uh, it's up at the top. Oh, get away. There you go.
Kyle, you moved the building, was it outside of the RP area here?
Yeah, so the building is outside of the RP area. I mean, here we moved the road. It's, the rocky hatch is a little height for the road going into the site. So we're outside of the RP buffer, a hundred-foot buffer from the Resource Protection District. We're outside of that now. We abandoned the existing road that's through there, relocate the road to outside of that hundred-foot buffer, moved thirty or forty feet, I think. But my real question, and I think that one of the biggest questions that still remains with this project is, we, we are proposing to traverse the existing road to the south right through the buffer right there. And I guess.
And through part of the resource too.
Right, directly adjacent to the resource.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, there's a way that we could seek to, you know, improve the road in the buffer. Is that something that we should propose, or is that just going to get, is that a no-go? And we need to, because this is the only way to access extraction area one at this point.
And we saw on the site walk that there's an existing logging road that goes right through there that we're planning on using. We're not trying to widen that road. We're just trying to improve it for use a little bit. So it's really the only access point that we have to get into extraction area number one. And I'm really seeing from this new information that we received from the state and also from the revisions that Kyle's made, really the only two environmentally sensitive areas that we're looking to impact are, one, the, this short stretch of roadway that goes through the RP area right here, and our two, the vernal pool buffer, which is located in extraction area number one. So for a five-hundred-acre site, I think that's a fairly minimal impact. And, you know, I'm really hoping that the board's going to work with us to, to be able to get into extraction area number one, because it's very important for us business.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not shown on this sheet, and we will be on an oversight plan, but the, you know how, if we were outside of the Resource Protection Buffer going down to Resource Extraction Area one, we'd be on the opposite side of that moraine that's there, going through those two small wetlands. And it would be, it would be very difficult, I guess, to access Extraction Area one. Alternatively, I mean, we could seek another entrance on, on H Road, but I don't think that's a great idea, just with all the issues that we have. We'd like to keep the larger trucks off of H Road and the machines off of H Road. So that's why we're proposing to have our access through the Resource Protection Buffer area.
And the good news is we're not going to be traveling through a vernal pool buffer in that area, which we had thought originally we would be.
I thought the trail, the road goes right here, so it goes right through the vernal pool buffer.
Once it got into the pit area, it would, it wouldn't
Yeah.
Go into the pit area and not continue along that, that way.
My existing trail wouldn't be used perfectly past a certain distance.
Right, but the stone mobiles would probably still utilize that trail.
Yeah, I think that the haul road would, would enter into the extraction area, and then be internal haul roads in there, and then exit as far to the north as you could, just so you wouldn't have to build a road around on that. That's one, I mean, that's, it's definitely a sticky point we'd like to work through tonight if possible.
May I ask you to, just so, just for clarity, where the road would, would come off of, could you, could you just point with a pointer, you know, where, where it goes into the pit as opposed to going through, where does it stop?
Yeah.
Where does the trail begin and the road stop?
I'm actually asking my wife for a laser pointer.
I have, I'm just going to find it. Jason already has one. I'm here with me, sitting around. Actually, I heard this on a Florida, so next evening, I might have it. Right here, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is the area you're talking about.
That's where the, here, here we are through the resource in the buffer, and here we are in the extraction area, and this would just be a
Trail.
As it is now, the proposal would be. It would be untouched by this process, I guess.
And Matt, where's the logging road that you said that you were going to use that's already clear?
Remember, we walked it at the last.
Yeah, I do. I do remember that. It'd be on the bottom right, right?
I would.
Oh.
Sorry, your problems.
Go for it.
This was where we came in off the roadway right here. Remember, there was a trail that was already established right here?
Right, so that's what you were talking about using.
Lost your shots, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we come right and
I'm fed a new food.
It looks to me like it's probably about, what do you think, two-hundred, three-hundred-foot stretch? Two-hundred-foot stretch, maybe?
It's more than that.
From here here?
About four.
Four feet.
And it is very, you know, adjacent to the, to the resource.
Thank you.
So you're not going to continue to use the existing road into the vernal pools? You're going to start mining the tip and then keep, keep on working your way?
Yeah.
Down?
Yeah.
Right. So the, the logging road will have to be improved a little bit for use, but it's not going to need to be like necessarily widened significantly or at all. It's just going to need to put down some gravel on the It's just gonna need to put down some gravel on the top of it so it's a little bit more firm. And of course, we wanna make sure we've got, you know, good sloping on the side of the roadway, well vegetated. And when we're doing that work, that we've got silt fence up, uh, we're following all of our erosion control procedures.
Do they have a dust control?
We have a water truck. Yeah, yeah. We use that quite a bit and it works out well, yeah.
That's wide enough for two trucks coming and going? I don't re, I don't think.
Probably not, it's probably.
You said you weren't gonna widen it, so you will have to widen it.
We don't need to widen it, it needs to be wide enough for one truck to get in there. That's it.
What about one truck coming out and one truck going in at the same time?
Yeah.
Stop and go lights.
Yeah. There's a good chance that we'll probably take material from this area and haul it up to the processing area and process it there because it's gonna be kind of a tight area to try to set up a screening plant in like a full-scale operation. I think you guys saw how big that escrow was when you were out there, how, how tall it is. It's gonna be more like taking some material out of that, where's the 60 or 70 foot face right there? Loading it onto a truck and bringing it over to the processing area.
So you're only gonna have one truck hauling stuff to those?
Very, very likely, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Probably a haul truck.
Right.
Will just bring material from here over to the processing area.
All right, well, I think the number one thing I had on my roster was to go through the operations manual tonight. Would you do that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we quickly, just for a little bit of peace of mind? I was listening to John's comments about what we're looking for with the traffic study. I think I'm clear on that. I'm gonna go back to Diane, ask her to revise the scope of her proposal and then go ahead and move forward and have her start the study. Are we all on the same page there? Does that sound pretty good?
So in my notes, maybe the board can help out if I'm missing anything for the road study. Turn lane and signage, uh, site distance, impact of road on a safety standpoint.
With the road.
And the opinion of west shore drive versus the H road. Was practical, um, I guess.
Right.
Is there anything else because?
Speed limit, turn lane as well.
I mean, a lot of those things are just suggestions from the board that the engineer would come up with her own assessment and maybe use some of those suggestions or maybe have her own different suggestions or, you know, I mean, I could suggest that we get a center line on each road. But those aren't really, well, it would help, but it's not necessarily what the engineer would say. So we're, we're just gonna go with her assessment of the location.
I've got a question about the site distance. You guys said you're gonna go and trim some trees now.
Yeah.
Trees go back, so what, you guys are planning on maintaining or removing trees or how's that gonna work?
It's our responsibility to maintain the tree trimming so that site distance is always in place. That's our responsibility as operators on site.
Like that would be something good for the ops manual. We wanna put that into our operations manual.
Yes.
I mean, it is pertinent to us because they, they're gonna be within that 100 foot buffer, they need to maintain the, the road doing that work, so, which makes sense to do, but.
Yeah.
Yep.
And a, a question for the applicant is, um, is, is part of the scope for the engineer to take a look at the existing conditions, like the width of that road and road grades within a certain distance?
I think there's something in their, in their proposal about vertical curves, like checking the, the up and down of the road if there are any issues with that. But I think that would more relate to speed, right? The vertical curves kinda indicate how fast you should post a road. So if there was a maybe more steep or more down curve in the road.
Right.
Then she might come back with a recommendation to slow things down, something like that. And I think, I think, you know, for, for Matt to update her, um, scope of work and say, please address these issues to meet the requirements or the preferences of the board, that'd be perfect if she could say, you know, impacts to road safety, like this is that, impacts to, you know, options on west shore or H road. Actually, it's kind of an all cart thing, it's not a standard, um, standard traffic study. So we, we should, we should be dictating your wishes to her, so it's, I think it's great, so.
Right, we'll wanna let her know about the number of other extraction areas on H road and the, the amount of truck traffic that's on there now. I mean, it, you know, because that does relate to.
Right. But it's, that's, that's, you're, you're, that can start to turn into a very big comprehensive study.
Well, I mean, that's what, you remember in the spring when we went through all that earlier? The very beginning of the process?
Right, and the moratorium was moving down at that time.
No, but the biggest reason that the moratorium was conceived of was because of public comment that there were already too many large trucks on H road.
Right.
And resultingly, we wanna know how many trucks this road can actually take before there's gonna be accidents without, you know, just imperatively. So I think that that could be, should be part of the traffic study because, like Ben pointed out, the site distance is different depending on the type of traffic on the road. And we do have these large vehicles already on the road.
It's, it's not dependent on the vehicles on the road, it's dependent on vehicles turning out of the, it's dependent on the vehicles from the site.
Well, when the vehicles are coming, they need to be able to slow down quick enough. So if it's like a sports car, they're gonna be able to, you know, Beamer's gonna be able to stop quicker than a, a loaded truck. So the trucks on the road do, do play into the study as far as I'm, it's right in here.
And that's why it's longer, like we have.
Right, and that's what, why you came up with the four, I'm looking, that's why you're at 455 is because 30% of traffic made up of vehicles larger than standard passenger cars on a 35 mile per hour road is 455 feet. So like the existing traffic needs to be taken into account somehow. Just like on 109 when we were doing Monarch, the, the speed limit was rather high, is high because it's 109. And we were more concerned about the trucks getting up to speed quick enough when a car was coming.
Which is the, the trucks from the site, not the trucks from, not the trucks on the road.
Well, if the, if they can't get up to speed quick enough, the one coming is gonna have to slow down. So can they slow down fast enough?
Yeah, so I, in, in other words, I, I think maybe restating what I'm hearing, you say Gavin, you can let me know if I'm way off base, uh, the, the site distance requirements in the local ordinance are based on the character of the traffic at the proposed site, but those numbers are also dictated by the speed limit on the road itself.
Yes.
So the site distance is greater on roads where cars are going faster or trucks are going faster because they need more time to see and slow down, uh, when a loaded truck is entering or exiting the site.
Right, right.
So I, I think we're all kinda saying the same thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
You were focusing on the road and you were focusing on the site, but it.
Well, I just, I just wanna make.
Be lower the speed limit to 25 instead of 35.
Right, and that may be something that the engineer suggests.
I just wanted to make sure that the engineer did take into account the existing type of traffic on the road because off the top of my head, I think there's four more pits up there where the trucks are coming through from those pits. And how does that factor in? Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm not trying to.
Can one of those slow down?
That's kinda what I'm saying, I just feel like if we get, we can get an engineered study, but if she doesn't look at the type of traffic that's on the road right now, the, the study will be incomplete for me.
Twenty ton truck at 35 miles an hour.
I'm, I'm just putting it out there.
Go down.
I mean, it's totally up to her to come up with the.
That's the type of traffic that's on every road though. I mean, when she does a site distance.
Not every road in Acton.
Well, yeah, but when you do a site distance study, like she considers the vehicle with the lowest profile because something that's sitting lower to the ground, it has more difficulty achieving site distance.
Well, I hope she considers all these things we're talking about, that's kinda what we're trying to.
Right.
And I think we all, I think we are good on this. And then hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll like, you know, everybody will like what she has to say, that's good solutions that, 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 you know, help eliminate traffic issues because nobody wants that.
Yeah, and I've worked with her in the past and she's had some great recommendations in the past. And I think that where you're coming from is that you want her to think about the whole equation, the whole picture.
Yeah.
And we can certainly convey that to her.
She can't stop stuff from happening, but we can minimize the risk.
Right.
And often trying to.
Right. That does make sense. But we should paint the picture for her, you know, about the unique situation on H road with the types of trucks that we're looking at, the types of vehicles we're looking at, the lake community in the summer. That should all be part of the equation.
For the road being right there and people coming out.
Yeah.
And you got the dump.
Yeah.
Evo across.
The dump, yeah, the transfer station.
Transfer station, okay.
On the weekends. I'd be looking at it more as how, how fast can the big truck slow down? It's the big trucks that need more space to slow down if coming, you know, vehicle pulls out.
And they might be trying to get a little speed to get up over that road mac right there, so, because that is a hard hill to get over, so. Should we switch to the ops manual? I did wanna hit the, we can, yeah, the archaeological resource real quick, since we talked about it but didn't really talk about it. I didn't know if we were interested in the, um, whatever they call it, prehistoric archaeological survey or if we're just.
This is the, what they're, what they're gonna be looking into.
And this is, this is just for the, the, uh, just for that one?
This is just for the homestead?
Yeah, just, this is just for.
I was just wondering, you know, the prehistoric under the, what is, sorry, I stuck this thing again. Where did we get to with that? I mean, I'm not trying to dwell on it.
Well, as I mentioned last time, that was kind of my prop, my fault of trying to put the toothpaste back in the tube, uh, right now with that. It's, the ordinance doesn't require looking at everything.
No.
For, and, but now that we have a letter that says that, um, there may be some prehistoric or pre-Native American type stuff on the lot. But the, the ordinance doesn't say that we need to, need to look for that. It says only that we need to look for things that have been identified on comprehensive plan.
True.
It wasn't much identified in the comprehensive plan, but we're, we'd like to show whether or not this, where this homestead would be and if it's on the lot or not.
It's on your checklist.
I'm okay with that.
But I'm looking at, Ben, I'm looking at your memo, you know exactly what we're talking about. The prehistoric archaeological survey is necessary to report to the project area below the 640 foot line.
It's on your checklist.
So I didn't, I mean, and it seems like we've kind of just skirted around that verbiage and I didn't know if it was something that the, I mean, it's all well and good to look everywhere for one homestead that's a couple hundred years old, but, um, people were here for tens of thousands of years before that and, um, we have, we have the main historic preservation commission stating in a letter that, that a prehistoric archaeological survey is necessary and I just, I want it, I don't want it to be swept under the rug and we haven't actually addressed that issue straight on.
So I think the, I follow, this, this second, this is actually a third, second scope that we requested from independent archaeological, the independent archaeological consulting group. And when they send their scope, we have correspondence with them and the main state, the main historical preservation commission agreeing to this scope, um, to only look for the, the one homestead if that's what meets the board's requirements. So I can send that, I can send that correspondence. That main historic preservation society will say, yes, just look for this one, this one thing if that's what meets the local requirements.
Pat, you were asking what the checklist said. It says archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. That's how, that's how it's described.
Yeah, so it's in the ordinance, is, is the point I'm trying to make.
But it's also, like Kyle was saying, that it has to be within the comprehensive plan.
So if you pull up the comprehensive plan, there's like three or four pages on historical, you know, everything. And it's, it doesn't say, doesn't reference anything specifically on our lot, I guess, is.
Correct.
In there, it says, the comprehensive plan, you know, it says, main historic preservation commission would love to do more work here and find more things, basically.
I guess it's for the board to consider, um, as we go forward, because we don't really, we haven't really gotten too, gotten too far with it, we just kinda need to figure out if we, if we think that's important or not. All right, so now you wanna go through the operations manual?
Sure.
Or unless you have any other tidying up on the, those sort of.
When, you're, you're saying that the board needs to have more discussion on this matter?
Well, we haven't discussed it at all, we, we, we have a, a letter asking that it be looked into.
That letter.
And we've discussed it.
I wanna clarify that quickly, I think that the archaeological society is saying, we would love to look into it if you wanna pay us. And we got a quote from, for something like 25 to $50,000 for them to go in and do a full-blown comprehensive study. They would love to get paid to do that.
Right.
I'm not, I, I think that's what you're possibly seeing here. They're not saying that they think that it needs to be done for any specific reason of concern. They're just saying, pay us, we would love to go out there. That's my interpretation of it. You know, I don't think they're necessarily saying, there's a reason to be concerned, we should go out there and do a study.
I think you're, you're dealing with unmapped territory, so everyone's curious, but.
It would make sense if they knew about possible sites on this area that they would want to investigate. But I mean, if they have no record of historical sites there, yeah, don't expect to find them, uh, isn't necessarily.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
You are gonna see if that old homestead is.
Yes, definitely, yeah. We personally feel like that should be comprehensive enough and we would like to get that determination so that we can move forward and have them do the study because it is going to take time to get them out there. Um, and we are fast approaching on winter.
Yeah, no, I mean, from my viewpoint, the prehistoric would be more significant than an old homestead. I mean, I've got an old homestead on my property, it's half-fallen-in foundation with a, you know, you gotta watch out for the well kinda thing. The significance of it, yeah, somebody lived there, but it was only a couple hundred years ago and people have been all over this area for tens of thousands of years and no one has actually mapped this area to know if there are historic resources in there. And I'm just one member of the board, but basically we would just have to get a couple more members to form a outlook or opinion on that so that we can decide, because I'm not hearing anything else, so we'll just keep going for now.
Well, let's get the opinions.
Let's get the opinions, yeah.
My opinion is, is, um, I hear what you're saying, but they've identified that homestead. I think incurring that expense for, uh, hey, let's go digging and see what we can find, isn't necessarily fair to the applicant. I think we're talking two different things. You're talking prehistoric as to historical. So prehistoric is something you would find and then you start digging. I mean, ran across the fossils and now we've got something that they for, but a prehistoric thing, there's not a record of it anyway. But historical buildings where people used to homestead or something like that.
Right.
I think we're talking two different things, so.
And can you name any other applications where they've been required to do these studies in the past few years? Have any other applicants been required to do prehistorical studies or?
So Matt, would you agree to a statement that if you ran into something when you were digging, like the red paint people, that you would stop?
Of course.
Yes.
I mean, it happens, it happens when they're doing a lot of projects along rivers because they end up finding a lot of grave sites and that stops a project real quick.
Those construction sites I've been on, they run across, and if it's questionable, they stop.
Right.
But I know several.
Yeah.
So I mean, just a statement that you would agree?
Yeah, if I start finding arrowheads and, you know, clay pots, then.
Let me know.
Go, let you know.
So that could be another thing to add to the ops manual, we should just keep tracking it.
There you go. Back in the back.
So that's, that's John. Anyone else want to weigh in?
I said a statement.
You want a statement, yeah.
He would agree to, if he ran into something.
Definitely.
It would be investigated and not just destroyed.
Yeah, I like that.
That's simple.
Okay.
Doesn't cost any money.
I feel like that would cover.
If he runs into.
That would probably cover the homestead too, honestly.
Yeah.
Do you think that's good enough?
From my, from my viewpoint.
Thank you, because.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's old foundations everywhere and.
And old stuff, family cemeteries.
Right, yeah.
So that's kind of in keeping what John said. It's, you know, it's unfair to have an expensive study if you just agree. It doesn't cost anything.
I very much agree with that.
So you're going to have reporting any findings of historical significance? Is that what the thing was?
Yes.
In a sentence? Yeah, we had a, we had a section, historical something in the ops manual, just had two sentences there. So it's covered and.
That is a great idea. Okay, I feel like I have my peace of mind now, Gavin. So do you?
Good, okay. Oh, we even discussed it, it was just kind of sitting there, I wasn't sure what people even thought.
Right.
One thing we don't have to wait for to be able to call it complete.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you call an application complete without this traffic study, or can we make that a condition of completion?
No, we're going to want all the paperwork in line, just like the DEP permits, we're going to want to see those before we call it complete.
Okay. The notice of intent to comply?
Well, there's, there's several DEP permits that we were discussing last time and we might have touched on when you were here before. You know, being the, around the vernal pools, however, you've whittled it down to two at this point, but we're still going to need the go-ahead for those, for that infringement on the buffer. And I, from my perspective, it seems like two permits because it's two pools, but I'm not the one applying. Then also, I'm looking for a DEP stormwater permit for the building site, where the building's going to be. I mean, we need a DEP-approved stormwater management plan for that area. And honestly, I'd like to see one for the processing site too, because it's not an extraction area. So it's not typically internally drained. We need some sort of stormwater management plan for the, the processing area and I feel like it should be DEP-approved. Remember we were talking about what we're going to do with the.
Kyle can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would be inclined to believe that the wash plant area is actually an internally drained area that will be reclaimed after use.
Well, you need to let us know it's going to be internally drained, where the water's going to go. Remember we were talking about the three wash ponds, their elevation relative to grade, if they were, what was going to, the type of water that was in them. Was it a well, was it stormwater, was there going to be a berm around them, was there going to be a fence, all that. And their location in the processing area. Being in the side of the processing area, upper right. Where, where would the water be going in the lower left of the processing area, that kind of thing. 14.6 acres or whatever it was, is a fairly large area and I, I don't think it is exempt from DEP permitting, honestly, because it's not an extraction area. So at the least we need clarity on that.
Okay.
We have to figure out if this building has to come down.
Yeah, that was a weird one too.
Right.
Well, what, how we were, was it?
I don't think that's, when I was looking at the stuff, they were, the building was part of the extraction.
Yeah, but in the woods.
Says temporary structures and buildings in the ordinance.
Yeah, it says.
And building.
Number seven, page 54. I'll just read it real quick and we can noodle with it again. I think, Jason, we asked you to get Lankowski's input on this one.
Yeah.
Legal input and we were basically just going to go on legal advice on this one because I, this, but I don't know if we've actually done that yet.
It's in the minutes.
Yes, yeah, I want to read through those minutes pretty, pretty well.
I read it.
Yeah, I didn't do that, that is my fault.
No, there's no fault, I just.
Buildings, if it's within the extraction site, is what.
Here, I'll read number seven.
There was no time limit on it.
Number seven, no equipment debris, junk or other material shall be permitted in an extraction site except for those directly related to extraction operations. And any temporary shelters or building erected for operations and equipment used in conjunction therewith shall be removed within 30 days following completion of active extraction operations. So I just wanted to get a legal input on what that was saying. It's saying a few things. And this does relate to your off-site materials as well. And I do want to come back to this when we go through the operations manual, just where it says, no equipment debris, junk or other material shall be permitted on extraction site except for those directly related to active extraction operations. So, and I do want to come back to that when we're looking at the off-site material.
Okay.
Because, and I just want to get a legal opinion on this particular paragraph because I don't know. I don't know, I know Ben was here when we talked about it, I think, and.
Yeah, I, the way I read it is, if it's temporary and it's in the extraction area, it has to be removed when extraction is complete. And as opposed to the maintenance building or something that's in the operations as opposed to the extraction areas. If you were going to have a, like a temporary cover or something like that over a screening machine or a crusher or something, that would need to be removed based on the way I was reading the ordinance when the extraction is done in whatever area that's in. But if we're talking about, and I think this is what, I think we were talking about last time was in the context of that maintenance garage, the operations building at, at the site entrance, that's not within an extraction area and that would potentially remain beyond the life of the extraction activities.
I mean, okay, I just want to point out that this passage does not say anything about being in or out of
Right.
the extraction area. It says erected for operations and equipment used in conjunction therewith. It doesn't say where it is. I'm just, I'd like to get a legal opinion.
Fair enough.
Yeah. What is the, what can I know about that?
Page 54, number seven.
It says we're on an extraction site. Well, is that the whole site or just that extraction site?
Yes, that would be the whole site on extraction site. An extraction area would be areas one, two and three.
Within the site.
But I, honestly, this verbiage isn't clear enough. And I'd like, you know, that, that's why I'm, I think it would.
Yeah.
I would hope you would get a legal opinion on it too, because it would probably weigh in your favor anyway and clear it up.
Do you want me to speak with my lawyer, Joe Lankowski, or?
Either one of you, I mean.
That might be a conflict.
Or anywhere you want would probably work.
So the, so Jason's going to be reaching out to Joe Lankowski and I may seek my own legal opinion. My only.
I mean, I feel like that might be a beneficial way to do it so we're not both looking for legal opinions from the same lawyer. But I don't, but I don't know how much it matters, so.
What did Bill Plant have to do with his garage that he installed?
Well, I feel like we may have overlooked this in his application. But, and I remember that Bernie brought it up at one point. But I, it's, um, I'm, I'm still on the, just going to the legal opinion because I can't. I don't feel like we're really progressing.
I just, I put a note on my phone and called them up, so.
Well, I mean.
My interpretation of that is that it's for a temporary structure, not a permanent structure.
All trailer offices.
Yeah, exactly. This is a permanent structure. If we leave the site, that structure has value for the town. Like you could sell that building.
Yeah.
It's not something that you would have a cost of tearing it down, you know. It, it's got value.
I think you absolutely could be right, but I.
It says temporary.
I, I feel, I don't feel I can get there, but.
We'll clarify for Gavin.
It says the word temporary.
It says temporary, any temporary.
The way I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Would say the building would have to come down.
It can be interpreted either way, so if we just.
Ask the lawyer.
Just. I was just going to get some clarification from an outside source.
Yeah. Okay, so that was another.
Can I back, can I back you up one second here, Gavin?
Oh, yeah.
The PB, the permit by rules, it's like, it's about, for the vernal pool permit by rules, it's about $2,000 for, to submit that to the state. So maybe.
Kyle has to do those.
You have to do them, but from my experience, and maybe Kyle has a different experience, but is typically, the planning board will require you to do them as a condition of approval. Because whereas we don't know 100% yet what's going to be approved or not approved, we could spend $2,000 on a permit by rule and then have to change the permit by rule after the approval. Do you have, want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I guess.
It just seems a little crazy to me to spend a crazy amount of money on a permit by rule when you don't know whether that's what you're actually being approved for or not.
Well, I don't want to approve something that is then not approved by DEP because we are the last line of defense, we're going to wait for DEP to give, give the go-ahead.
I guess if DEP said no to the PBR, then it would, the condition would not be met and the approval would not be.
Granted.
Granted by you guys because it's a condition.
Well, I don't want to be put in the position where I've already signed the map and we get to that point. That's, that's not, I mean, I just, I'm just referring to page 54, number one. Applications to the planning board for conditional use permit for the excavation, screening or storage of soil, including topsoil, heat, loam, sand, gravel, rock or other mineral deposits shall be accompanied by a plan prepared according to planning board specifications, performance standards thereof, in compliance with all applicable state laws and accompanied by all required state permits or licenses.
So, yeah, the one.
Your applicants are going to, like, if, if this is the process, then applicants are going to, may, over time in the town, spend a lot more money than they need to seeking after DEP permits that they're not sure whether they need or not. Do you understand where I'm coming from there?
Well, I'm, I'm just going with the ordinance and that's where we're at.
Okay.
I guess, so there's, there's a DEP notice of intent to comply, which DEP says, do not submit this until you have five acres disturbed. We don't want to see this permit until you have five acres disturbed because we're so busy, we don't want to deal with it. How do we go about that? Is that all right to do after the approval? Or do we need to send it to them before we disturb any acreage? And we are planning to, so it's, it's, it's basically if you have more than five acre pit size, open pit area, you need this NO, notice of intent to comply. But they don't want to see it until you get to like 4.99 and then you say, okay, we're going to comply with staying above the groundworm table, keeping our buffers, keeping our side slopes at three to one or two and a half to one. But that would, I guess, how do you guys want that? Do you want that before we do, before the approval, or is that a DEP permit that's all right to have after the approval?
Well, perhaps that's one where we could make a condition. You know, that it's a, but there's other permits and approvals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From DEP that, we can view each, each DEP permits, you know, slightly differently in that.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to, that's just one that's.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying.
Some points.
And by approving it, we're going to be approving you, opening up the, however many acres you propose, 40 acres or whatever it is, over X amount of time with X amount open at a time. And the board's going to be all comfortable with that, whereas some of these other permits, I'm, you know, I'm not sure, and I think you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
I think we can do that.
Let you know that that one is up to you. You'll have to do.
So for the sake of clarity, you would like to see the PBRs for the vernal pools. You'd like to see the stormwater permit for the building. You'd like to see a stormwater permit for the wash plant area, assuming that area is not internally drained.
I'd like to see stormwater management plan for that area.
DEP NOI. And that might be after.
Yeah, it might be after the approval.
Okay. Is that it?
Mm-hmm. Local permit.
I mean, have you had DEP at the site yet?
No, I, I haven't. I've talked to them.
I mean, I.
I don't know if they come out or.
I'm pretty sure that we should get DEP to the site before we approve this thing.
You can try, Eric Cluck is the, he with a C-H, Eric, Eric, or Eric? Cluck is the gravel pit guy. He's the one that said, don't send me anything until you absolutely have to because I'm just so busy. But we could try to get him out and.
Yeah, well, I think you should because I'm not going to be operating on how busy he is.
But that's not in the requirements, is it?
Yeah.
There's, there's a number of local requirements and there's a number of state requirements that the applicant's going to have to comply with, with both. And the local permitting and state permitting and local enforcement, state enforcement are really separate entities. I'm sure you, you know, there's, there's a number of these in town. So I, I think it's, it's wise to think about these things. I mean, the wording of the ordinance is pretty clear that all outside, all state permits need to be submitted. But I do agree that, you know, sometimes that's not possible or not practical. And I think this board has, has handled those situations through conditions that say applicant must comply with all applicable or a copy of DEP permits need to be submitted to the code office so that they're on hand. But the, the local code officer is going to be able to go out and enforce local requirements around potential approval. The, the state mine folks are going to be looking at water table issues and looking at buffers and those kinds of things that aren't typically handled at a local level. So I, I think that's my way of saying that we need to be aware that there are going to be these bigger state requirements that can, to some degree, can be handled through conditions. But keeping the local review on the things that are, you know, more typically handled at the local level through the ordinance is just where I want to make sure we're all understanding where the lines are. You know what I mean?
When we put this application together, Gavin, we follow, we were following very strictly that town ordinance. And to hear six months later, okay, we want you to send somebody out from the DEP, like, to hear that now, it's like, okay, well, we're, we're also following all the state requirements and it could take us four or five months to get somebody from the DEP out there.
I kind of thought you had, you had the person out there when you were doing the wetland surveys and everything.
Oh, we did.
I didn't need to ask you five months ago to send the DEP out there. I thought you were doing it.
I don't, I'm not sure that's typical.
That is not typical.
Well, this is a, anyway. I think we, I already stated everything I had within this aspect of the project and and we have an understanding whether or not we like it.
I, I think just maybe my, my little point on that is the applicant is aware that they need to meet state requirements. the applicant is aware that they need to meet state requirements and they're designing, uh, a project that will hopefully comply with those things. That's the, uh, purpose of, I think, a lot of what they've submitted to the town. And in the event that, um, they are too close to a water table or in the event that, um, you know, the buffers or berms are not maintained, that becomes an enforcement issue with the state. And I think if it's significant enough, it would need to come back to the board to amend the plan potentially. But I, I think at this stage, it's that balancing act of, you know, what is, what do we need to know? Knowing that the state's gonna like be putting requirements on this, how much of that is important for the local approval?
So could we do like a conditional thing where it required to follow all state guidelines?
Well, I.
Not covered by local.
Digressing your.
The, the only thing that I think this line of conversation came out of was when do, when does the applicant need to submit a, uh, all the state outside permitting, right? And that Gavin had rightly pointed out, the ordinance says that needs to be part of the final application. And I think Gavin said, I won't quote, you can let me know if I'm putting words in your mouth or not, that a condition of approval could be considered for certain things that, um, DEP's not prepared to issue a permit on at this point.
Right, like beginning to open up and, and extract.
Right.
Yes.
And then that, I think we're all in agreement on that. And then there were some comments about, you know, how much additional information does this board need about state permitting to make a local approval? And I think that's, I'm not sure if we were done talking about that, but I think that's kinda where the conversation was going.
Condition that they apply, it's out of our control.
Well, I think we need to be clear, in the interest of getting to a complete application, which permits do we wanna see? And I agree, I think the infringement on the two pools, um, we should see.
Yeah, which, which was, last time was five pools.
Yeah.
So, which, um, well, I guess this map's outdated. I don't know. I've got quite a few maps that show different things, but, um, any pool that you believe you're gonna be infringing upon that is significant now, um, I, I wanna see those permits before I approve this thing. And the same with the stormwater management.
What is that, does that go with the PBR for, for shoreline, you get two weeks? What is that?
Same.
It is the same.
It's the same for this. And, um, I talked to Rodney, who's, uh, you guys met Rodney a while back.
Flycatcher.
Yeah, yeah. So I talked to him about submitting these and he said that you can do it under one cover page. One of the PBRs is one page, fill it out, and then there's attachments, like a site map. And then he said for this, for each buffer impact that you're doing, you'd have one, basically one separate attachment for that. Layout, basically what I showed on the plan of the buffer area, the impact area, the percentage of that. Um, do that for each buffer, but you can put that under one, one PBR. So once you submit that, pay the, uh, like the previous applicant who was up here, pay the outline fee, um, submit it electronically, and then basically it's 14 days. And if you don't hear back from DEP in 14 days, it's, um, considered granted or accepted.
Yeah, all right, well, let's move on to the operations manual.
Yeah, it's eight o'clock. This is, we're doing well, we're doing well.
I just would, there's a lot of discussion going on here, so I would like to somehow formalize this discussion in one way or another, um, maybe with Ben or with Jason. Have me and Kyle put together our notes tomorrow and say, this was our interpretation of what the planning board's looking for. These, this is what we're going to move forward with doing. Um, and just make sure that in writing, we were all agreeing on the same things here so that we can keep progress moving forward.
Which will be in the minutes for next time, when we approve those.
Okay.
We will. But I, I think we're kind of in agreement on which permits we're more interested in, which ones we could make a condition.
And, right, and the traffic study. I, I'm trying to get to you have a completed application.
Me too, that's where I wanna be.
Right, so I think.
Yeah.
But I think we're there. I think we know it's the traffic study and these permits.
There are issues we have in the operations manual.
Yeah, there are issues, but it's here. It's here. You know, we can go over it and, um, there are updates being made anyway. A couple of notes on things like maintaining the trimming and that sort of thing.
Right.
Um, so we'll go through and there'll be changes, but it's here. It's like it's, it's, it hasn't been submitted. We haven't.
Did, did the board get a copy of, uh, the memo I put together earlier this week? Um, essentially, I, I put something together and emailed it to the applicant. It very, very similar to the, um, staff memo from August. That was dated August for that September meeting, except it only focused on, uh, things that were in the operations manual as they relate to the performance standards in the ordinance. So there were a lot of other things that the applicant had submitted in March and July, um, that were in that August memo. That for tonight's purposes, I, I think the intent was pretty clear, we wanted to focus on this document. So I, I took those things out and drilled down a little deeper into the operations manual. That might be a good discussion guide, um, or.
Well, I'd like to just walk through it page by page and go with my own notes because we can go through your notes, but then I'd like to go through Chris's notes and John's notes and my notes. So if we just go page by page, you can say what you found, you can say what you found and.
Yeah, we haven't seen that memo.
No, no.
I probably printed it out, but you wouldn't have seen it because you got, nobody came in or whatnot, but. I got it. Do that. Continue on without me.
Do you, do you have it electronically or does that matter?
I can pull it up right now.
Well, I'd rather have the operations manual in general up on the board because we're gonna be getting comments from multiple places, not just.
That's gonna say, I don't know.
One.
I'll have the operations manual right now. I can pull up Ben's memo as well. So wherever you guys wanna go with this, just.
Well, I think Ben's memo is valuable and we need to take it into account. I haven't read it yet. I have my own memo, so to speak.
I would like paper.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's get it now and then we have it so I can, you know, look at it as we go page by page.
Yeah, this one we call.
We'll start with the.
How you guys feeling about the title? Is that gonna?
Yeah.
It's okay.
It gonna work?
A little more disaster to the.
Yeah, I don't know about the font.
Yeah, the font.
Yeah.
We'll go with the capital.
Old English.
Old.
And maybe the zip code.
Well, I don't know, I can zip code off the top of my head.
You wanna ask us about the font?
We're trying to bring levity to this.
Okay.
It's only the third hour.
A little font at eight o'clock at night.
I didn't even get up here till eight, till eight o'clock last week, so.
You're ahead of the game.
Never had, hardly, yeah.
I'm gonna wait for Jason to come back.
He said we can start if you wanna do it.
Well, I wanna get the memo so that, I mean.
Will you start with your notes?
Well, I don't wanna go review the whole operations manual five times for everybody else's notes. We just go.
I will jump in. Um, I, I did review and put my notes section by section in, in the context of the ordinance. So I can jump in with any.
Right, so we had a request from members of the board, we stayed for copies.
On the way.
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't have any notes? Have you reviewed the manual or?
I don't have Ben's notes from last week.
Sorry, I thought you made it sound like you had notes prepared that you wanted to share.
Oh, I do, but they're all just written in the manual.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Oh, one thing I should.
You guys changed the demo.
I have mine, mine's a Libby pit.
Two sets.
I got the Libby pit, that's it.
Yeah, mine's not dated.
This is not Acton Sand and Gravel pit like he's chewing.
I have what's on the screen.
Yeah, it's a more up to date one.
Were changes made to this one? The same as this one?
Yeah, probably.
I think the Acton.
It's probably the old one.
I got those for this one.
Yeah.
We don't need.
The Libby pit one, yeah, toss it.
Toss it.
I put all my notes where I know, just kidding. Probably did highlights though.
Oh, I was gonna say, um, the, uh, this weird discussion last week. This plan, uh, there was some discussion about the, uh, you know, this interior lot that's gonna be created.
Yeah, I think that's one of the very first things we, as we get into the, um, Three Rivers Land Trust Donation Trail Access and Donation Conditions and, um, we'll probably end up discussing that.
Sure. But I was just gonna say, on this, this most recent plan that, you know, we're just working on this week, um, all the extraction area boundaries are 100 feet away from that internal lot. So there was a question last week about how that lot would be broken out and my understanding wasn't, uh, solid. But we do have a required 100-foot bumper from the extraction areas to that lot. So if it was split out as a separate lot, the, the plan would, would meet that requirement, which was a question.
Yeah, I think that was one of the, one of the questions we had about the donation was when is the donation taking place? Is it just an easement and you retain ownership? Are you passing ownership to Three Rivers? And, I mean, I think that information is, is, um, in the operations manual, but, um, maybe you could speak to that.
Uh, the donation will take, will take place immediately upon approval. It's going to be a condition of the approval. I don't care which, both ends.
Have there been any other lots created out of this property in the last five years?
No, yeah.
We're going on subdivision.
Yeah. Bob Libby split the property in half, but I think it was over five years ago. Yeah. Since it's under new ownership though, it should be a new five-year period?
I don't think that.
I know, it wouldn't restart.
It's just strict about years. But there was only one split, so then you get three, up to three, right? I think before.
Wouldn't this be part of?
Third one would.
But this isn't like somebody splitting off a lot, this is part of a site plan approval.
Thank you.
Well, that's, before I ask you, but it does sound like you are splitting off a lot. They are gonna retain ownership once you are approved, so to.
Yes, they are gonna own this land. That is our intention.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're going to have a right of way to access the land as well.
I'm pretty sure you know your memo.
Thank you.
I didn't need it, thank you.
What does that mean? Anything good?
No, we waited for you.
Might be a subdivision though.
All right, well, we'll just start with the first page. Does anybody?
Okay.
Anybody on the board have any, um, comments on the first page or, or Ben? Want to, uh, page two? Performance guarantees. Well, this is, we, we need to discuss the performance guarantee that, uh, the town is gonna hold, right? This, uh, kinda breaks it out to, um, DEP, you got, um, you're looking for 35 acres open at a time.
That goes back to paragraph 3.3.
Further in the manual?
Yeah, 3.3.
Yeah.
Where in fact they don't have, says insert the dollar number.
Okay, so do you wanna wait till we get there?
Yeah.
Okay. For the reclamation performance guarantee. Okay, all right, um. It does say on page two, if the town of Acton or MDP formally update their required performance guarantees, the operator will have to supply new performance guarantee based on the amounts within a reasonable amount of time. And I feel like that's something Jason was, uh, discussing, kind of just loosely, um, because we should update the performance guarantee, given that I believe the last one I did was $2,000 an acre and the code officer now feels like that's an insufficient amount and.
So I have made some contacts, some calls to other, I guess, entities that have been dealing with, um, extraction, um, guarantees and things like that. And what, I knew the state was 4,000 and the average median seems to be right around $6,000 an acre. For the local, local, then. Uh, I know, I think I was told Berth was up to like 13,000. And, and I don't think Acton is looking for some absurd amount like that. I think, uh, for the average being 6,000 in that ballpark was, um.
Here, that I would, might suggest. And, and this, and I'm crazy for saying this, but in Sanford, it's, they go with DEP, they go 4,000 an acre. But if they have a site inspection and they come onto the site and they see that you don't have big stockpiles of loom on site, then they up your performance guarantee to 12,000 an acre. Because the big concern is that you're gonna sell off all your loom and then when you go in to do the reclamation, there's no loom there. So just one example of what I've seen from other towns, um, maybe the 6,000 is kind of like a middle, middle point, but, um, you know, just from your perspective, moving forward with gravel pits of so-and-so bad actor takes all the loom off site, it might cost more than 4,000 an acre to reclaim.
So you're saying you like 12,000 then?
I'm saying, yeah, I would agree to that if the, if the, if the inspector comes down to the site and there's no loom stockpiles at all.
I don't know, do you?
Straight up, just straight up.
Oh, I don't wanna straight up agree to that.
So, before.
But I would agree to that, I would agree to that if there was an inspection done and.
So before that goes any further too, though, it has to go in front of the select board, the select board of the people who are gonna make that decision. Um, so this is kinda just a situation. But anyway, that's.
There's nothing in the written ordinance on required amount?
No, I, well.
No, it's not in the.
My, I, in my memo, um, and I can look it up in the ordinance, but it, it, the amount of the guarantee has to be set by the board.
Yep.
And the form of, and then the form of the guarantee. And the form of, and then the form of the guarantee can take, it, it specifies three different ways and I know the town has a preference.
Well, that's the problem is I gotta go in front of the board, but right now the, the.
No, I don't, it, it's not the selectmen, it's us.
The form of guarantee that they have only require, they're only requiring.
Cash.
Cash.
Oh, I know, we've done this a bunch of times, but it's, it's the planning board who sets the amount, 'cause the selectmen don't really know. They're not on the site, they haven't done the two sitewalks, they haven't spent the months of time looking at it. So I feel like it's totally within your purview to set it and the, and we can even vote on it as a board if you'd like. In the past, in the past, the previous code officer suggested we should go up because times are changing, you know, diesel costs more, blah, 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 million hours, and.
Well, hence the, why I made, uh, why I tried to figure out where, where to set.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think we're fine to go with that and if the applicant agrees on the amount that we've agreed on, then that's, that's where we're at.
Makes sense, because we've done all the research, but the town just decides what form they wanted in.
Well, and they've already made that, that's the thing, that they've eliminated all forms of it and, and taken just cash over.
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter to us how they get it, really, or how they want it.
And this was done, um, where, when I believe I started here, um, it was a.
Previous.
Yeah. There's a previous applicant that had to come in and, and they did a very large escrow, cash escrow.
It's gonna take all night, we don't need.
So it looks like we're talking $6,000 an acre from the town, but we, we may need to put a formal stamp on that.
Okay, that's something we, maybe.
But that's what you should be prepared for, I think.
Okay, and that, are you positive that's gonna have to be cash?
Right now it is.
Really?
Yes. Certified check or something.
Letter of credit?
Well, the thing is, what is, what do you think the lifespan of your project is?
What's your lifespan of your project?
Uh, anywhere between 20 to 40 years, depending on.
So even that six grand wouldn't be enough, you include inflation and all that stuff, the way it's going to reclaim it if you, uh, technically.
More, I was going more in the direction of these longer-term projects, the bonding agency might go under, there's just these other things that come up where the, the town is just happier to have the cash.
Well, then the bonds are no good anymore if the bonding agency.
This was the, the line of thought that, um.
We had a big discussion on it too.
Oh, we've done this multiple times over the years.
Because line of credit can be fluctuated a lot.
Right, and whoever wrote the line of credit may not even exist in 40 years.
Right.
You know, and when the town would have to know to get it updated, someone has to maintain the bonds, keep, you know, keep tabs on them. We don't have to do any of that if we just put in the escrow account, it's there.
So $6,000 an acre to raise every year according to.
I've, I've seen, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I think along that line, though, like managing a guarantee over time, some communities put a condition in place to say, you know, the amount has to be revisited every.
Does it say that in section three of this document? I thought, I could've saw we had something in there about.
I saw that too.
How they, how applicant would come to the code officer, revisit this, the open area every year to update the, um, so then it protects all parties and, um, I, I thought that was.
If the town of Acton formally update their required performance guarantee amounts and the operator will have to supply new performance guarantees based on those amounts. So there's.
Sure.
There's room for us to adjust for.
And this is, this document isn't really what matters, right? I don't think, it's your ordinance that matters.
Well, we don't have a set amount in these ordinance. So, you would put it down in your operations manual and that would pretty much be you saying you agree to it. And then we sign off on it.
I guess our operations manual is different than other people's operations manual, so.
The, the cost of reclamation could be different for your project than somebody else's too. I mean, it's hard to set a standard for everyone.
Yeah.
Because you're doing, and we're gonna put topsoil on there where they're doing something else, it wouldn't cost to reclaim.
Well, we just compare them to other mineral extractions that we've looked at and, like I was saying, the last one we approved, it was $2,000 an acre and we're looking to increase it and that, that's our suggested amount that we're working with right now. But it's always been cash.
So this would apply to mineral extract? Pretty much.
We're.
Yeah.
Sorry. Kyle, were you suggesting that this appear on the plan as a note? Or, as opposed to the manual itself?
I'm not sure it's, maybe it's applicable in the manual.
Hmm, okay.
Maybe, maybe we could remove it from the manual and it would be part of, somewhere else in the approval.
On the map that we sign.
Or some, yeah.
Yeah, and that would be fine, as long as it's somewhere in the paperwork that we approve, that it's, that it's written that both parties agree to this amount. It just, it just happens to be in the manual and that.
Yeah, 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 for sure, yeah, and that, our requirement to have funding state isn't dependent on this, it's dependent on the state, you know, so it's.
Yeah, but you, you tell us, you're telling us that, that you're $4,000 an acre.
Yeah.
You know, so, it would make sense if you plug our number in here if you had DEP's number in there. But if you wanted, put the performance guarantees just on the, another aspect of the plan, that would work, I think. I'd be happy with that.
One last comment on that is, we need to get clarity on the number of acres. You know, there's 30, there's 35, there's 40, all through the documents.
Right.
So, we, we need to settle on a number.
Okay.
And be consistent.
Are you supposed to have, keep it to 10 acres before you have to reclaim it?
Unless we file that notice of intent to comply and that's basically a requested variance and that for that, for that overage, over, over the grant.
For me, the open, if the wash plant area is considered open acreage, then I'm shooting for around 40 acres, because that's about 10 acres of area that I need. If that's not considered part of gravel pit open acreage, then I'm hoping for about 30 acres. Um, so it depends to me, it kind of depends to me a little bit on whether the wash plant area is considered open acreage or not.
I think it is, 'cause it's gonna have to be revegetated when you're done. So I, I would say it is.
Say it is.
14.6 acres or whatever it is.
Okay.
Is considered part of the open acreage, I would, maybe the area around the maintenance building is not gonna be considered open acreage, 'cause you plan on keeping it that way.
Yeah, right.
But every one of the, you know, the extraction area 1, 2, 3 and the processing area.
Okay. So I'm gonna clarify that I'm looking for 40 acres of open acreage.
Just get that consistent throughout the document.
Okay.
Now, are you gonna be operating in extraction areas 1 and 2 simultaneously?
Um, yes, there is a possibility that could happen, yeah.
Okay. 'Cause, I mean, that, that would just dictate a larger area that you would need to, you know, to make sure that the 40 covers that, and I think it would, but.
Right.
And like, how much of the land are you gonna have, is grubbed initially?
Um, I mean.
Or, or harvest, are you gonna harvest the full, everything at once or are you gonna be moving in stages or? I think that's further along too, actually, in your, I had a question about that.
I think initially that we're gonna wanna open up the, sort of the wash plant slash processing area, so that we can put a screener or crusher right there, um, and then likely start to take material, you know, kind of do an exploration on site, find out where the material is that we wanna work with first, and then start, sort of, as I mentioned before, pulling it from that area and bringing it over to the processing area. The processing area is a good advantage, I feel, for everyone, because it keeps screeners and crushers away from West Shore Drive and H Road, it keeps that equipment more like in the middle of the property.
Sure, you're not, they're not gonna hear them in West Shore Drive or H Road?
Hundred percent, um, I mean.
Hundred percent.
I don't think, I don't think it will exceed the, um, decibel limits at the property line.
Right.
The only reason why I say that is, I was down off a floor the other day, I could hear a screener.
Yeah.
I still got the property line, just to exceed the.
Yeah.
Too late there, I can't not do it.
I know.
I would not say you would not a hundred percent hear it.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're going, you're going to hear it lightly and you're gonna have to like, we talked about what 50 decibels is the equivalent of, um, in the past, like a.
Right, you gave us like a sheet of lawn, or.
Yeah.
Rock concert, all the different, you know, chainsaw.
Yeah.
No, I remember that.
Right. 50 decibels is like a.
It's like, you and I speaking right now is like 50.
Right, that's about 50, yeah.
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 Pat said she had to leave.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And the, it does, we're gonna get to that, but the crusher can't start operating until, I think it was 8 o'clock AM or maybe 9 o'clock AM.
And you'd be happy to have the same times for the screener as well?
I, I think that the screening plant should be able to start around 7, um, because that is a lot quieter than a crusher, um. I personally feel that this, you know, start your day around 7, start the screener around 7, um, but maybe not start with the crusher until later in the morning, so.
That's another comment I had, the hours are different in various documents as well, we need to.
Right.
Set the hours.
That's in here, isn't it?
You wanna, you wanna?
Get into it.
All right, so site, you wanna move to site access?
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, you've got the lockbox kind of thing so the fire department can get in, and you're only proposing really two, two points of access, one being the right-of-way to get to the donation parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was wondering too, on the map, it shows the, that right-of-way as kind of curving down and it, it rejoins, uh, Snowmobile Trail, if you will.
Okay.
And comes to the property line with the.
Joins it or crosses it?
Well, maybe, um, well, it kind of joins, it crosses it, but then it seems like they're convergent as they approach the, the southern property line. And I was just wondering if in the future that right-of-way would ever be used to access the southern parcel that we're not even discussing right now.
Oh, definitely not, that.
Just 'cause when you look at the map. Um, I need one probably.
Right there.
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, you see how it curves down and, and, um, converges with the Snowmobile Trail right there? And then kind of that shoots down into the, the next property right there, and I was just wondering, um, if it would ever be used to access that parcel or not.
I think the, the intent of that, um, right-of-way there was to meet up with the trail that actually goes to the, kind of hooks that up um, into the interior of the donated area, um, I don't. I know, it, it does look like it would hook up and go down, plant it down, but I think it's meant to hook into that trail that's going up into the, um, trail. Yeah, that one there. And it's, it's, you know, curves around to avoid some, some.
Wet areas.
Wet areas.
Yeah. Sure. But I, I just, just something that, uh, you know, piqued my attention was that just the orientation of the right-of-way almost looks like it might, um, be used that way in the future, and I didn't know if there was any, any verbiage that said yea or nay on that.
Straight south?
Straight south, no, we don't.
So they're not, the applicant's not the owner of that property?
Just, just on the right?
Just on the right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now.
I don't think there's.
Is the owner of that property the same one you purchased the existing lot from?
Yes.
Okay.
Why?
Well, I'm just.
You're, you're really getting out there, Gavin.
Right, right, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, if, if in the future you're gonna buy that lot and use it for that and whether or not we cared, but if I'm going too far in that, we'll just keep moving.
I'm not gonna.
Me.
I'm not gonna have any rights to that right-of-way, that right-of-way is going to be owned by Three Rivers Land Trust.
Okay, so in here, somewhere it's gonna say that Three, Three, where is that? That Three Rivers is the only one who uses that right-of-way?
Operator will require formal agreement with Three Rivers Land Trust. Post no trespassing signs, third paragraph.
What page?
On page 2, 134, third paragraph, is agreement with Three Rivers Land Trust, that no trespassing signs will be posted at the valley junctions, just like that one.
Okay.
And we can add coverage on no.
What does that mean?
No vehicles, no, no pit vehicles or those type of vehicles will be accessing the site via the, this right-of-way.
I'm looking at, on page 3, 1.6, Three Rivers Land Trust donation and trail access.
Yes, right.
Right in the middle of the paragraph, it says, uh, across the street from, owned by Three Rivers. This ROW will be used by the land trust to access the leased property with non-commercial vehicles only for trail maintenance and other required projects. The Three Rivers will also utilize the right-of-way because it's a walking trail, access the site from H Road. The Three Rivers Land Trust will not be permitted to allow public use of the right-of-way with vehicles. So I didn't know, it may not be necessary, but maybe it's something to the extent where it says this right-of-way will be used solely by the land trust?
Yeah, you want to, like, kind of put it.
I don't know if the board thinks that's necessary, I just, I feel like when we create these right-of-ways, um, it's kind of, if it's not spelled out, they, they could be used for, for other things in the future.
But, but if we say we won't use it, we don't, we can't really control who else uses it, we'll say it's for the land trust, but word that the Acton pit will not, Acton pit will not use.
Isn't it the owner that sets the regulations or the stipulations on a right-of-way? The owner of the land.
Yeah.
You set the stipulations that it can be used and cannot be used on a right-of-way.
I mean, if I'm getting too picky here, we can go past it.
I, I think Kyle's suggestion, uh, meets that intent, that it would provide some assurance that there wouldn't be big trucks or extraction operation vehicles using that right-of-way.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's where you're going, right?
For the most part, I, I'm just not even sure what the uses could be in the future that it would be used for and.
Yeah.
And here we are creating a right-of-way, um, with them, you know?
So I think if Three Rivers Land Trust ever wanted to develop that or put a parking lot or a visitor center or something, that would be subject to a future application.
And then you say here, Three Rivers will be responsible for providing a site distance survey to identify the exact location of the road, trailway entrance on H Road.
I'm not sure that's needed if it's not, if it's just a trail that they're using for maintenance.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm kind of, that's kind of just trying to pin down the, the full use of this thing and should we, should we be concerned with getting, uh, site distances and entrance permits and all that kind of stuff, or do we feel like, um, that's just.
Well, and then you refer the down, it says, but, uh, establish entry location at any time, but reserves the right to move the location of the right-of-way that travels through their active.
That's a common thing, I have another extraction place that has a right-of-way that goes right through the middle of their property and they have the right to move that right-of-way. As long as that right-of-way is being, is maintained and used and they, someone can still get to their property.
But it doesn't make, make sense to get the site distance on one, keep coming back, move it, keep coming back.
What I'm saying is that the entrance location will not move, but the, the. What I'm saying is that the entrance location will not move, but the, the lo- but the rest of the right of way may move as work intus in the gravel pit.
Right, within the extraction area, 'cause you're gonna, it's eventually the.
Exactly.
Right of way will be passing through the extraction area.
Correct.
And then through the finish.
Maybe bend it through that part, but it will.
Yeah.
Will still maintain right of way.
Okay.
Kind of.
Bendy was a good word to use.
Yeah.
It, we um, you familiar with that red gate that's right there? And that would likely be where the right of way came in, um right at that red gate, there's an existing trail right there. We were actually pretty close to there when we were on the sidewalk um. But if we wanna stick with a given point where, you know, they're going to access the site, we could, that would be the point we wanted to choose, you know? Come in from the red gate and then that'll be the fixed entrance location, we could show that on the plans, but you know, as I discussed, we might need to move the location of the right of way over time, you know, from there.
Let's explain down in the next paragraph.
Is it?
Location of this trail with the, you know, trail may be moved over time by. Just as long as it connects.
Okay.
And it's.
Okay, anything else on page two or three? Kinda skipped ahead a little bit. Okay, page four.
Line four talks about how they will not allow trucks onto that. Three Rivers Land Trust will not allow any commercial vehicles to, to include trucks and dump trucks and all that other. One of the points you were bringing up earlier Gavin.
I think number four goes on to say that um it is a restriction that the applicant would be placing on that land to not allow the public to use vehicle, vehicles on the right of way at all. So that would avoid a scenario where that gets used as a, a road or a, or access to a parking lot or something.
In one point eight and.
The first one?
There, there's. Yeah, there's two.
That was what I was gonna say, yeah.
Um, there are two one point eights, but in the first one point eight um, this is probably another question for your lawyer, um Jason, but they've put in here that we as a town are agreeing as a condition of approval, though in the future there won't be any changes. And in my opinion, that's not something we can agree to. We, we can't tie the hands of the town. And so my recommendation would be that section and there's another section that talks this way uh needs to be struck.
So have him review that whole one point eight section?
Yeah, and then in, let me find it, there's another one where they're saying the town, they're trying to tie our hands into the future.
It's not applicable, it goes beyond the scope of the board's review.
Right.
My.
I think that makes sense, get, get rid of that.
You know, from my perspective is, it's a pretty substantial donation and to make a donation like that but not know whether the town's gonna come back and say, oh, we have a, we're now putting a moratorium in place. When I was watching this moratorium process take place last winter, it was talking about taking, gravel pits that were already approved and saying, you can't have as much truck traffic going in there. You changing the approvals after the fact.
That's not what it was saying.
Yeah.
Not at all what it was saying.
Got that one.
It's putting a hold on to a more detailed view.
It was, it was limiting expansion of conditional use, so if somebody came in and said, I want more trucks during the moratorium, they wouldn't be able to change their conditional use permit during that time period. So they'd be stuck with the number of truck trips they had approved.
Okay, 'cause as far as I, I guess my interpretation at the time, it, it felt a little different to me, almost like it was.
Is that what spurred this?
That's what spurred that.
Paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we can't agree to that.
Right.
Who knows what's gonna happen in the future?
Yeah.
Again, in my opinion, and I think we need the lawyer to say, but my opinion is that just needs to be struck.
Yeah, like on page five, number three.
Yeah, I mean.
The one, two, three.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
The entire paragraph, one point eight.
No, I understand that, but I feel like some of the, yeah, okay, that's fine. I just feel like the meat is, is one, two, and three. You know, that, that, that they would do these things.
Yeah, I mean, you can do, you could do those things. We don't, but levying.
By making it contingent upon us.
A condition on the town. Again, I, I didn't stay at all at the end, I'm not a lawyer, but I think the lawyer needs to see that. So my recommenda- recommendation would be to strike that.
You look like one with double.
If I have the.
I'm gonna tell you how a thought I have here um is, leave, to donate this piece of land to them is, is give them the right of way indefinitely, for sure. But the other part of this equation is all these trails that they're, that they'd like to have across the property. Because the whole goal for Three Rivers Land Trust is to be able to try to connect the Goat Hill Preserve to the Hanson Pond Preserve. And aside from the land that we're donating, they wanna have trails coming across other portions of our property. So in my opinion, as an operator, we're going to have the flexibility in the future to allow them to use those trails to cross our property or not allow them to use those trails. And um if the town treats us good and doesn't change our conditions in time, then they will continue to be able to use those trails all they want. But in the event that the town comes and says, you, we're gonna cut back the amount of truck traffic you have, we're gonna cut back your hours of operation, if that were ever to happen, I think that we would say, okay, we're not going to allow the land trust to use these hiking trails to cross our property.
It's between you and the land trust.
And there you go, yeah, so.
Yeah, I feel like just, just putting the town.
You don't put the town.
I don't have a problem, you, you, you're gonna have your own relationship with Three Rivers, I don't think it should be contingent upon the town.
I don't see any way where the town would have that authority in that, and cut off trails.
And that.
Unless it was an element of the, the site plan review, like if there was a trail easement shown on the plan that was.
Yeah.
Never gonna move, then I think that would be something that you'd be bound by, but I, there's nothing like that. So just like any other landowner who allows trails to cross their property, that those could be relocated or terminated. Um, my point in, in that short write-up was that it really goes beyond the scope of the board's review because the board cannot unilaterally just two years from now, five years from now, say, uh, we're, we're gonna amend your site plan to uh limit hours or number of trips or anything like that. There could be zone changes in the future, the state could change their rules in the future and uh, you know, you would have an approval that would be grandfathered to the extent that that's addressed and whatever changes. But um it.
Right.
My recommendation would be to, to eliminate that first section one dot eight for that reason.
I will do that, I'll take out all of that language. I understand that this was written quite a while back when we were right in the heat of the moratorium and it seemed like a very threatening time for all of us in the industry. And I will certainly remove this language and make it clear that we are very intent on giving them the right of way and, and donating the land. We, we see some provisions here as far as that donation goes. One of those provisions Gavin had touched on is that we're gonna require the land trust not to, they're, they're gonna sign, they're, part of the agreement is that there's gonna be no buffer between us and the land trust's property. There's not gonna be a hundred foot buffer between us and them, it's gonna be like a line sharing agreement in writing, so that we can come right up to their property line.
Uh, we were just looking at that on the map, we had, we had the buffer right on the map. And it's in the, yeah, if.
There's a hundred foot buffer should be on their side of the property line, not on our side of the property.
Well, the, the zoning ordinance requires you to have a hundred foot buffer there too, so.
You could have a line sharing agreement with a, with an abutting landowner. And if we're donating the land, we can set the agreement up that we don't, we don't necessarily.
Okay, let's see, where's the?
Yeah.
I don't think it benefits you.
What's that?
Oh, here we go. Page fifty-four D, performance standards, number one. No part of any extraction operation shall be permitted within one hundred feet of any property or street line except for drainage to reduce runoff from extraction area, maybe a lot of fifty feet. The vegetation, natural vegetation shall be left and maintained on the under-strengthened land, so.
Yeah, it was just a communication error between us, it, we're, there's a hundred foot buffer on, on the.
It looked like it on the new mannequin.
Yeah.
You said it earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Which, and it's gonna be.
Not, not disturbed, right, except for, well, our pits are all internally drained, so there won't be any.
Right.
Water or whatever the, the.
But the natural vegetation shall be left.
Yes.
And maintained on that hundred foot buffer.
Yeah.
Kind of like along the road, except we're gonna give you that, we're gonna say, okay, for the site distance clearing of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
One point in eight.
There's.
Twice, we just picked out the first.
So, so Matt, do I, you, I do not need to call the lawyer on one point eight, the first one point eight, because you guys are gonna remove it?
That's gonna be removed. Yeah.
The last paragraph in two point O is the same thing, that needs to come out.
Okay. All that language will be removed.
Okay, we're going to two point O, is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
Anything under?
I didn't have anything, anyone to do with that.
Yeah, he just jumped ahead.
Right.
Well, it was the same issue, the last paragraph in two O is the same issue, saying, talking about what the town.
Agreed.
Those, yeah.
Were there any comments on the, on the noise, you know, backup, white noise instead of beepers or?
Oh, under equipment?
Yeah.
My only comment on that section one dot eight equipment was, it said, uh, equipment that's not necessary for the extraction or processing of sand and gravel materials will not be stored within the extraction area. And to me, that begged the question of, would there be equipment not necessary for the extraction processing stored anywhere else on the site?
Uh, thinking about the maintenance garage, you know, you might have like a little skid steer or like a tractor that you use, um, that's really all I can think of, that's.
But that's not like.
Yeah.
Storage of material, that's still related to the building itself, it's not like uh.
Yeah.
Bringing in boats or cars.
No.
Yeah.
No, we're not.
That'd be.
I should get into storage, everybody seems to be making money on that now.
A lot of.
Did.
It'd be a good plan for that building when you're, when you show.
That was, that was my only question.
Two point O.
Right, that's page six, the last paragraph, right before environmental studies, this is what John was.
Yep.
Just referring to um, which may be clear to everyone, but we might as well revisit it. If the town of Acton decides to change the operation conditions of this working gravel pit years to come, yada, yada, um, can we get rid of that?
In my opinion, that doesn't apply to any intention we.
You gotta go to the next page, Jason, if you would on the big screen.
Yeah.
No, I, there we go.
Did you hear anything else?
Without Tom Acton's action.
Yes, it's consistent with the, okay.
That was the one that was already, the last paragraph, two point O was asked, was need to be removed?
Yeah, yeah, we already touched on it.
Yeah.
But just since we're on that page. All right.
Two point one.
No, we're in, you're already right.
Okay, environmental studies.
All two point ones as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first two point one.
I think we're, the, the biggest question I still have about the environmental studies is the, the one vernal pool declared significant along the road that then was declared not significant because it was man embellished. But I went to a DEP workshop on vernal pools, um, it was probably about ten years ago now, it was when I first was on the board and they said that some, you know, can be declared significant if it's been embellished by people, it's about the habitat that's there, so.
Yeah, so originally it was submitted as uh significant based on the critters that were in it. Um, and then Rodney followed up with Tom Tetrow, who's, who's Stan Tech, um, talking about how it was man-made with discussion with a neighbor. And based on those, that, those conversations, Tom resubmitted to the IFW, um, and then they, that's when they ruled, okay, so it's man-made and it's not. And that's just, that's, that's one of the uh, like checklist items, if it's man-made, it's, it's not, can't be significant. It can still be a vernal pool, but it's just not a significant vernal pool.
Well, I was wondering if we wanted, would we find out the DEP weigh in on that?
They did, they did. Yeah, so that's, that's that letter.
No, so you have, yes, you have done some, okay, all right, well.
That letter with the uh, the bunch of tables and a high level company with the vernal pools on it.
Just seems like a weird, weird.
So Stan Tech did a revised submission to the state then?
Just on that one, um, yeah, on that one. I can send the correspondence to Jason to, to send out to the.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Uh, we've got the answer, but I, I would like to see the revised submission.
Why would one be significant and then the other, this one not, when it has the same type of?
It's strictly the man-made, the man-made aspect.
Man-made?
Yeah. So there's one.
It doesn't make any sense.
I know, every single lake in the town has a DM on it, it's like.
Right.
Everything is influenced by humans, it's still significant habitat.
Well, and on the form itself, there's a category, there's unnatural, which I guess is man-made, and then there's unnatural and something else, which is what that bond was called.
Yeah.
And the initial submission, so I guess they've now said, no, it was, it's totally, he miscategorized it, that's why I wanna see the letter that we had.
Right, well, and I don't know if anybody knows if there was a vernal pool there and then someone dug next to it or expanded it or whatever, or if there was nothing there and then they dug there or.
Well, that, the initial submission made it sound it was exactly that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Chris. You know what we're talking about, right Ben?
Yeah, what was the number of it though?
Eleven D.
Eleven.
I mean, it, the, the rules are um complex in my review, because again, it's, it's like you could have a, an old, I think the example on the training I went to was an old gravel pit uh that's been naturalized and just kind of, and, you know, they would classify that. But I think the bottom line is, we need to rely on what the DEP's interpretation is. I think it's totally fair to ask for more information about, see the letter, but I, I wouldn't, uh, in my position, I'm not going to rebut uh classification from the DEP.
No, I, I got it, we got the answer from the, from the DEP, however, I'd like to see the request because in their initial submission, they call it natural modified.
Yep.
And so why, why?
I think that's fair.
What did he say in the other one that changed that?
Right, what changed?
Yeah.
What changed in that amount of time that, that changed the categorization?
Oh, they do tell me all this natural and man-made, if you dug a hole ten years ago.
Let's just get the letter, let's move on.
Okay, all right, very good.
So you, you'll provide that?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Good, thank you.
Forward it around.
Anything else on two one?
First two one, I was like.
You had the first two on. I mean, I was told early we get the IFW response. Not sure I've seen it.
Yeah.
You have.
Yeah, the. Yeah, it's for, for vernal pools.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's that letter that's, I sent it past out.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's two pages and then the attachments and two letters for, um, I didn't catch his name.
Hours of operation? One thing is I think, didn't we agree at one of the previous meetings that Saturday would end at noon?
We did agree to that. I will change that.
And then, Jason, I think we had been interested in, uh, is this consistent with other hours we've approved?
What did we have, we dealt with one, the, the state doesn't allow you to, is it six thirty or something like that?
Yeah, I think it is, start at six thirty.
I think, we just dealt with, um, with another applicant.
Okay. It was something about the tailgate slamming, like.
Yeah.
You're allowed to load at six, but you can't.
Not load at six thirty.
Unload until six thirty or something like that, cause the, the slamming dump truck tailgate?
Okay.
You sound familiar to you or?
So, um, no, it's just the first I've heard of that, but.
It was like you could operate your own equipment, you can maintain your equipment or whatever it was and, and, but you couldn't load anything. I can't, I'm trying to remember.
Well, you could load your own trucks, but you can't let the public in. There was like this couple of different things like that.
My notes said no outside trucks before seven.
Right. That's.
That's how, um, none of the fits, Monarch is seven, seven AM. No outside trucks until seven AM. No extraction whatsoever until seven AM. So they can maintain gas and refuel their own equipment, but they cannot operate an es- an excavator, uh, a bucket loader or anything like that until seven. And that was one of the reasons of the moratorium was to get everybody on the same page for future, extraction. One of the things that the planning board wanted to try to do.
Put everybody on an even.
Even keel, yeah.
I think, um, at the end of H row, McCoy is six thirty, is when he can, when he can start doing his, uh, whatever it is. But then, uh, but, but then can actually haul on the road till seven.
Till seven?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, um, as kind of written here, I'm just trying to be able to load a few of my, of just our Pepin-owned trucks prior to seven o'clock, to get them on the road, but I don't wanna be loading any other trucks. And we don't have like a significant amount of trucks. Probably have about four to five trucks that haul aggregate. And my intent was to try to be able to load just those trucks a little bit earlier than seven AM.
Yeah, you got that right in the, it's the last line on page six. Trucks that are not owned by our Pepin and sons shall not be permitted to enter the location till seven AM. I think you got it covered.
Right, okay.
What can we load on Saturdays?
Load it.
Six, seven, that's on Saturdays.
Where does it say that?
Oh, you said last line on six?
Page six, yeah.
No, it's page seven. Top of page seven. Right, is that where you're reading?
Do you have this one?
He's on every one.
Last lot of pages is Monday through Friday from seven AM to ten AM.
Oh, now I've got, yeah, I've got one, one paragraph different in mine. That, that paragraph, you know, is, yeah, well, it says the same thing.
Yeah, I think the only question is.
I think you're covered there.
Yeah, mine, mine landed on page six.
Yeah.
You're changing seven AM to twelve PM on Saturdays?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Changing two PM to twelve PM.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
For all operations, so everything will be closed at twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. That's how it is throughout our town.
And then is six AM okay to load Pepin-owned trucks or?
Six thirty.
I think it was.
Six thirty. It's six thirty.
I'm loading at six thirty, but the water isn't really moving until seven.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well, they're not on the road until seven, but you can start loading at six thirty.
Cause that's what makes the noise.
They can load, but the start of six thirty is what we were proved in the past.
Six thirty and seven.
Okay, try to stay consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Using the purpose of loading. Can't begin hauling until seven.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The six thirty gives you time to get a truck, a few trucks going, right?
Yeah. And, uh, there is, okay, so we're good. Screening plant can't start till seven.
Yeah, that's.
The crusher can't, crusher can't start till eight. So the loaders can be active as of six AM. Like a good example is snow plowing, you know, you need, you can get out there at six and start plowing a roadway.
I would consider that not part of extraction.
Right.
That'd be more maintenance and, and, and things like that.
Part of maintenance, yeah, okay.
That's the way I would interpret that.
The portable screening plant, seven AM to two PM, or is that again?
I would say even like your, your water trucks would be part of maintenance too, if you were here to keep the dust down of some sort.
Well, we're gonna have to change that to twelve. Portable on Saturdays.
Yeah.
No.
Anything else on hours? Two point two?
Do you plan on hauling on Saturdays too?
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Bringing trucks back to the plant to keep the, keep material flowing.
All right, but.
I, I think that's their intent.
The intent was before we passed the previous one, Memorial Day through Labor Day, we didn't allow any trucking on Saturdays due to the dump traffic.
Oh, yeah.
Because the line, either, I don't know if you have been on that road, that line's all the backs all the way up.
Really?
You're gonna haul through there.
You're down to one lane.
Not even one lane, some.
Well, they're coming from both directions.
Yeah, so you're down to nothing. That was a big concern we had with another pit we, you know, put through and it, it's, that's the problem with where you wanna dig, I guess, huh?
Say we recommend traffic engineering for you?
Yeah.
You're cooking all these.
Well, if we can solve that issue somehow. It's just that there isn't enough room in the transportation or accommodate that many cars, I don't know.
It just gets very dangerous. I mean, even just in.
Even for passenger vehicles. For you and me driving.
Oh, yeah, I'm just in danger anyways.
Right, right.
Wasn't there no crushing from Memorial Day to Labor Day too?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think that's what we're gonna do here.
He's got it on Labor Day.
On, on the day for another one.
Cause, cause other plants are crushing between those dates. There's, I mean, there's, there's pits in town with crushers that are operating all summer and they're not even.
Right, but they grandfathered, they weren't passed by this.
Uh, there's like Landscap Depot, they, they weren't permitted to have a crusher through the summer and they bought when it was in there. So I, I don't know. I don't, I feel like crushing is an integral part of their, their, um, their work here and they're, they're not gonna be able to operate without doing that.
I'm fine with that Gavin, I just have seen other.
No, I'm, I'm.
I know, I'm just trying to stay consistent and the problem is we passed something saying on another pit that we weren't.
Part of the application. I don't think we drove that.
We didn't drive them?
I, I think it was part of the application. I don't remember for sure.
Yeah, cause some of them only get crushing two weeks out of the year.
Well, and a lot of them say that we don't, they're not, they're mostly sandy material, they don't require crushing. They're gonna put the cobbles in one pile and then rent the thing. Whereas, are you gonna be renting or?
No, we own the portable crusher.
So, I mean, there's one difference there too, is that they own the equipment. So if they're just renting, they only rent it for X number of weeks anyway, cause it's what, a thousand bucks a day or whatever it is.
Two point two.
Two point three.
But it's something we can look at, Chris, we should look at that if you want, because we.
Well, yeah.
We should make it more consistent.
That's what I'm trying to get at is consistency of.
Yeah, too old, but I'm not sure that is a thing that is consistent right now.
Not from.
From the last one that we passed, as a board, yes, we would be consistent with them.
Yeah.
But the previous ones, we had no control over.
Yeah, well, I think that, I think they have more rocky material than other plants too, I don't know.
Two, three.
I feel like, I don't know.
So I will eliminate Saturdays for Memorial Day and Labor Day. And somewhere in here, I have already eliminated the Fourth of July week altogether.
Yeah, it's in.
Yeah, it's over the back.
Yeah.
Yes.
Point two?
Yeah, limits of excavation. Um, so it says, uh, shall be defined by stakes or flags. I was just wondering what the stakes were gonna be made out of, how big they were gonna be and how far apart they were gonna be. Just the idea that, um, when you're grubbing it out and working, if your stakes are two hundred feet apart, it might be hard to see.
But on separation distance.
How far apart are your?
It's a lot, I'd say fifty feet is pretty good.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Will you put that right in there?
Yeah.
And the metal stakes of four feet tall or something, something visible. That's not gonna rot or fall off the tree and disappear, you know?
That's, uh, that's your, um, building plans for the resource protection.
Right, right. Yeah, cause it's like, the line's like this too, it's not like a straight line. So I think that makes sense, fifty feet works for me.
Yeah.
Great, we'll put it in there.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's for on the limits of all excavation.
To be.
Yeah, it's not, not, just the, just the pit extents, basically.
Yeah, are you gonna do that for the, um, processing area as well?
Yeah, we should, because we're gonna be clearing it, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could do that for the, you know, cause then you, that would, that would give us that peace of mind with the Aqua Protection District and the Resource Protection District and.
Right.
Get all those things staked out permanently fifty feet apart.
Yeah, a hundred percent, especially because you're.
No blasting.
No blasting, I'd like to make that a condition. I mean, I, it's great you're saying that, but I think we'd make it a condition.
So have that right on the map that we sign, okay? I think that'll work for everyone.
Two point three?
We kinda already covered this a little bit.
Uh, this says five trips a day during Fourth of July and Labor Day.
Week.
Right, during the, a day during the week, but you, you're saying you're eliminating that?
I'd probably like to have just five trips a day, just. You're right in the middle of a job or something and you need to get a few loads over somewhere, yeah.
Probably make that a condition then, five trips during those weeks.
Make that a condition, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good to limit it like that. Anything else, two point three? Two point five, I guess.
We're all over the place with that, huh?
Yeah.
There's no, they got an hour, they're actually gonna shut down operators if they don't comply.
Okay, offsite material?
Yep.
Um, now this is one where I'm back to the same, um, number seven, page fifty-four. Says, no equipment, uh, no equipment debris junk or other material should be permitted on extraction site except for those directly related to active extraction operations. And you've got some materials listed here that aren't, they're not related to active extraction operations. And I'm just wondering, um, how essential these offsite materials are to your business? And, um, is there any way that you would, um, reduce the types or quantities that are brought in? I mean, one thing that came to mind right away was the stumps, you wanna bring stumps in. But, oh, well, that's the next paragraph, but it's, it's a good example, but you've got forty acres of stumps in there. So do you really need to be bringing more in?
You know, I don't think so.
You know what I mean, I feel like.
Be sure.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't wanna give it away, cause you know, the Road Control Mix is an important DEP-approved road control product.
Yeah, that is true.
And making that is just chipping their grinding stumps, so.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
But, but for, you know, from my perspective, the stumps that are on site, grinding those up, utilizing them, whether you're gonna, I know it says, you're not gonna mix them with the loam, you're gonna sell it all. I, that's fine, but I feel like we can deal with that in the next paragraph, but, um.
I guess specifically like asphalt, concrete, concrete rebar would be the things that stick out there that wouldn't be typically associated with the site.
Yeah, then they have nothing to do with extraction operations and would you be willing to eliminate those from the, from your plan here?
I, I'd be willing to limit the quantity of those materials that are brought in. It'd be nice to have the flexibility if there's a certain job in the area to be able to bring those materials in and crush them, but I would, I don't, I understand you don't want massive piles of this stuff out there. I can, I can understand that concern and that's not my intent. But if there's like, it's beneficial, I think, for even the Acton community to have a place where they can bring that stuff and where it can get processed.
Yeah.
Rather than, you may find, a lot of people may end just burying this kind of stuff if they have nowhere to bring it, you know? Cause they don't know where to bring it or they've gotta haul it. Yeah. Um, we would crush it, you know, we, we would crush the concrete or crush the asphalt and then sell it. And.
Okay, well, I'm still gonna, I'm kinda hanging my hat on number seven.
Right, the problem is the, the ordinance.
They're not directly related to active extraction operations, so.
I mean, the stumps, you can make that argument, that you could need it for reclamation.
Right.
And they're already in there. You need to dig them up and grind, you need to do something with them in order to get to the minerals. That makes perfect sense if you wanna, you know? But these things that you're gonna be bringing from distance that are not, not the materials extracted, they, they didn't originate in Acton. I, I'd like to see you eliminate those from the, from the manual here.
And you're saying that according to the ordinance, that this is not a, this use isn't permitted for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on number seven, page fifty-four.
Equipment debris junk or other materials shall be permitted on the extraction site except those directly related to active operations in any temporary shelters of a building, that's the building thing we talked.
Right, it's like two in one.
Asphalt, rebar, concrete, it's not directly related to your extraction.
These materials are only permitted to go into the, um, not into the extraction areas, they're only permitted to go into the process areas.
I think that was part of the legal interpretation of, of that section of the ordinance, is it the site or the extraction area, what is the difference between those kind of concepts? Because I, I think there was a, just a difference of opinion on how to read it. Sounds like there's, there's at least a couple of ways to interpret that. And I, I know that the number one interpreter of the ordinance is sitting right here, but, um, he often does have, you know, he has that option to get legal opinions as well to just kind of back that up. So I, I think it seems to be related very much to that point you were making earlier about how should that be interpreted?
Yeah, well, that was, that was more for the buildings and, and things to be removed.
Right.
There's kind of two in one on this number seven, which is, doesn't make it any clearer. If it was two separate particles, that would be clearer. Um, but I don't, I don't, I mean, what we're giving you a permit for is mineral extraction. It's a conditional use permit for mineral extraction. And the building, sure, that, you're saying it's an accessory to a conditional use, okay, but I don't feel like this stuff is an accessory to a conditional use.
So it would require site plan approval for that?
I think it's, it's, um, part of our business, I guess.
True.
And the.
Where do you currently do that work?
Uh, we, in Sanford, where we can, um, you know, we crush our leftover concrete.
Okay, well, that seems a little bit more related. Honestly, the concrete seems a lot more related to your business.
Yeah.
Than the asphalt, because you're in the concrete business.
Right.
You know, so I, I feel like we could, you could make a, a play for the concrete, uh, a lot more readily. Um, but it still isn't directly related to active extraction operations, but it is integral to your business.
Right.
So, I don't know, I'd give it some consideration on what you, what you, how you could help us with these offsite materials, kind of balance it out, um, because you are in a sensitive area, you're like right against aquifer protection, you have all these, you know, we've spent countless hours going over the vernal pools and like this is a sensitive area to have these, um, materials brought into, stored, processed, the dust, um, all these sort of things. Um, I, I, I feel like it would behoove you to, to help us there.
Okay.
Could we say something like only asphalt from within the city of Acton or the, sorry, town of Acton would be allowed to be brought in? So it'd be local asphalt if it's pulled off of, when you resurface H Road in 20 years.
That's a hard one for me to, I can't.
No, I don't, we can't regulate that. How do we know where it came from? I feel like, I feel like we'd be more cut and dry if we said concrete from anywhere, but no asphalt.
I guess you, you know, you have projects, you have DOT projects in the city, you have town projects in the city. Those specific projects would be able to, to, you can use this.
I think in the interest of the town, we're the headwaters of three different rivers, three different waters should start right in Acton, they come right out of the ground.
Yeah.
We're in a very sensitive area in terms of water quality. It's one of the biggest assets, the town. Timber, gravel, water, these are the natural resources of the town and we're trying to protect them. Um, and in this case, you're already taking the timber and the gravel and we want to do everything we can to protect the water resources, so this is kind of where I'm coming from on that.
Are any of the other gravel pits on the H Road like permitted, like McCoy's pit, for example, is he allowed to bring in asphalt?
Stumps only.
Just stumps only?
It was a massive battle.
All right.
And he tried to fight it and he, he still is not allowed to bring in any gravel or, or asphalt. They actually didn't remove it and he just gave it to somebody.
Okay.
Yeah. And I feel like the bringing in stumps is a benefit to the town, making this erosion control mulch. I feel like there's benefits there, you know, for, for, as an accessory thing for pits to do.
Right.
Um, but.
Let's make a deal, I, I'll take out the asphalt and the concrete, but I am very intent on being able to bring in loom, compost, silt, clay, sand, gravel, rock, ordinary materials that you would find in a gravel pit.
And you would turn around and have resale there?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the goal, you'd have like bunkers set up down by the maintenance building kind of?
Uh.
Like the cement, you know, like Landscape Depot has?
Yeah.
Is that kind of the setup you envision?
Um, not necessarily bunkers, I think probably just stockpiles.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Processing area.
Not to, not to residents, this is just for if you have a job that has long, it's not to.
It's not a retail operation.
Yeah, or is it, or, I mean, it, it, that is a question, because like, for me, for me, I don't own a 14 yard dump truck, so it's hard for me to actually get materials from the pits in town with my small two yard dump trailer. I go there and they're like, oh, 8,000 pounds, smallest load. You know, that doesn't work that well.
Yeah.
I gotta trail that a whole 600 pounds and that's usually all I need is a whole load of rock or something.
So it is, it is of interest whether or not you are going to be doing retail and, um, what the, what the scale is going to be, are you going to be taking, you know, two ton dumps or is it only going to be big dump trucks or, I'm sure that's in here somewhere.
Uh, yeah, there's nowhere in here that prohibits retail, um, you know, it's, it's in my best interest to make sure I'm on top of that 50 trips per day. And if I start seeing too many people coming in, then I need to cut them off.
Cut the little guy off, because it's.
I would cut the little guy off first, yeah.
So what are you, what are you, um, saying you can remove from this asphalt?
I will remove the asphalt and concrete, for sure.
But not your own concrete, your concrete, it's bad concrete from your trucks and, and leftovers, you keep it, obviously, I'm assuming, right?
What do you do with that stuff right now? Like there's, there's cement left in the truck after, you know, they pour the foundation, but there's a couple yard in there. What do you do with that right now?
Leave it on the job site.
Well, they try to, but.
When we can, yeah.
Right, right, but say the homeowner doesn't want it, it's, you're in the shoreline zone, it's a small lot, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
What do you do with it?
Um, we will bring it back to our yard and a lot of times we'll pour it down on a flat pad and then we'll break it up the next day. And typically we can crunch it up with a pulverizer on an excavator and then we can crush it, so. Um, and it's, it makes, it really makes for a great crushed gravel. It packs like crazy. We have a reclaimed four inch minus right now and, uh, you know, three quarter inch crushed gravel. And people love it because it packs really well and, um, it's just a good, it's a good product, yeah.
And when you grind the concrete with rebar, what is the, um, product like? What is the use of the resulting product?
We, uh, did that, we actually did that this year and we had somebody come in and they had a special crusher that's set up for that and it's got like magnets that pull the steel out.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, so they're pretty efficient, they, they get like all of the steel removed. Um, I, I've seen a few very small pieces of like little wire mesh, like in the, in it.
Chicken wire kind of stuff.
Yeah, like, yeah, from, that they use for like certain.
Or whatever.
Yeah, precast concrete structures, yeah.
They don't have that just asphalt.
Well, I, I mean, it's, it's.
I like the idea of what Jason's saying of just, if we could have it so that was just concrete, leftover concrete from our operations.
Okay.
Only.
Yep.
But not any concrete with rebar in it.
Okay.
Because I think rebar is probably the ultimate concern, because you have a lot of steel, then you lead to a lot of iron, it leads to a lot of iron.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what you want.
It's just another.
Yeah.
Material altogether, having them metals.
Right.
So maybe, you know, I think that sounds pretty good.
Only asphalt and concrete from, with rebar.
Yeah.
And make it clear it's their concrete.
Right.
Their leftover concrete.
Right.
And where would your, the silt, like silt and clay, where would that be coming from? If you wanted to bring that in? Because you're going to, you're going to have plenty of that coming out of the ponds, right?
Yeah, we really will.
So maybe we could get rid of that, too?
Um.
Because like when you dredge, you know, it's like you dredge out someone else's pond and you're going to bring it there?
Yeah, I mean, we have like, we have a, a wash pond in Sanford and sometimes we, it's a silt pond and occasionally we've been able to use, it's been nice to use that silt for reclamation, because when we reclaim, we like to put down a layer of like silt and or clay and then a layer of loom. It really helps hold that moisture up to the surface and it promotes better growth. So if you get onto a site like this, sometimes you get lucky and you find silt that's naturally onsite that you can use, but sometimes you don't. So, um, having the option to be able to bring in silt or clay for reclamation is, I find, can be beneficial.
Okay, so you could specify just for reclamation on that? And where, but I'm still curious where it would be coming from, if it wasn't from the site? Because you're going to still have different mineral constituents in there that are going to be.
It's, would likely come from, you know, our operation in Sanford. If they can bring a load of silt with them up and then they can haul something back, um, it works out pretty well. Um.
Hmm.
But, you know, it, it could come from a job site, if somebody has a bunch of silt that they're, you know, silty sand, maybe.
Maybe we can, can we get it so it's just from your operation, just like the concrete?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just using it for the purpose of reclamation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
How are you, how are you weighing that from current operation?
From his operation.
What's that?
Just divert.
Oh, yeah, just from our operation.
I'm going to run out of pen and my ink here soon.
Two point six.
On-site stumps. Okay, so you're, so you're, you're not going to apply for this permit now, but you may in the future, is that kind of what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, it would be nice to have a one acre area on site where you can dispose of stumps.
I thought you were going to grind them.
Yeah, we'd like to see everything ground and not buried. Is that possible?
Is that the preference?
Well, and then I like to see it put, put back for reclamation, some of it.
Yeah.
Maybe you could do some for reclamation and sell some.
Okay.
Because I, because I was looking at ground vegetative debris, because you, I do have a lot of small unmerchandiseable trees in there that you're going to be stripping out and grinding up and it's probably going to be too much wood to be used fully in the reclamation, it's just going to be piles of, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be more than you need.
It might not work out, too. If we grind, this year, we don't reclaim for a year or two years, it might not be the best material, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, it would just turn into compost after a while.
That takes a long time, so you should, we should have the option to either be able to grind the stumps or to burn the stumps, in my opinion, if we're not, if we're not allowed to bury the stumps.
I think, I mean, it's fine if you stockpile some stumps so that you can grind them the next year. I think, we were just looking at this and I think DEP says you can keep the stumps in the pile for.
Two years.
I want to say two years.
Yeah, three years.
But that's, uh, for import, we could do it for the same.
Right, I mean, but it, it probably, you know, yeah.
The difference between an import and a large bulk on your land.
Import would be, you know, if it came from your, your lot.
Why, why two years max on imported?
Because that's just for that, for the PBR or whatever chapter 4 or 9 says.
While we're on that, that wouldn't apply anyway. We don't want to bring up import stumps anyway, right?
Well, I guess that's kind of what we're talking about now. Um, we didn't really, you know, whether or not they're going to bring stumps in, what they're going to do with the, well, the stumps that are there. Um, and I think, you know, we, we'd appreciate it if you didn't bury them, because it creates voids under the ground, people can fall in and it creates like dead areas. We, we've tried to have them all ground in the past.
So the second sentence in two point six, stumps will be buried at least 10 feet above the highest recorded groundwater table and all that.
Yeah, we'll get rid of all that.
All that's out.
The whole paragraph.
Yeah, we'll remove everything about burying the stumps.
Right.
We'll bring, we'll be able to bring stumps from offsite onto site for short-term storage and grinding.
Well, if you're going to do that, we, we're going to ask for your copy of permit by rule. Um, well, it says right there, a copy of, this permit by rule will be provided to the town attacked and prior to any wood being imported to the site or any offsite wood being processed.
Yeah, I think my understanding of that is, it's like, people don't grind, if you're not grinding all the time, you're going to grind next month, you send in a PBR at least two weeks in advance, just to let the state know that this is now a processing facility.
Right. Um, well, we, when we went through this before, there were, we had some concerns about the, the amount of stumps being brought in, um, and that they were basically the mineral constituents of the soil that the stump grew in, like, you know, it could be growing somewhere where there's metals in the ground and soil that are then imported. And then the other thing we were concerned with was invasive insects being imported into the town in the stumps. Um, so give it some thought, if you could just work with the stumps you have on site, that would be great. Um, but if not, um, we want to get this, a copy of the permit by rule. Which I, I, you know, I, or you could just come back to us to get that in the future if you got to that point and we could, you know, expand your conditional use to include that at that time.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Does make sense.
Two point eight. Two point seven.
Yep. And you said you're going to, pretty much all this topsoil is going to be stocked, a lot of it's going to be stocked by the Long West Shore Drive and that big berm, right?
Yeah, yeah. Um, that's a great way to go, is when you're stripping the location, you take that material, you create your berm instantly, um, and then you get your really good vegetation on that berm as well, um, which helps stabilize it and also kind of, I think, helps with noise and dust.
Yeah.
Um, and then once you're all done and you're ready to reclaim, then you just pull that berm right down and spread that loom right out, yeah.
Now, in, um, extraction area number one, are you going to have a berm of some sort there? What are you going to do with the topsoil from, from the extraction area number one along the, the one along the H Road? Are you going to just keep it in the, in there or are you going to bring it to the processing area or what's your plan for the, I understand what you're going to do with it.
Yeah.
The loam in two and three.
Um, I mean, there should be room to stockpile, uh, stuff, probably.
Maybe initially you'll pull some out and then once you get.
Initially pull some out, yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right.
Yeah, you got to build yourself some space to begin with.
Not a lot of room in there.
Yeah.
Because I mean, partially, in that in particular location, stockpiling the loam in there, the loam could wash into the wetlands.
Right.
That's a little bit more sensitive area for piling.
True.
I don't know.
But it is, you know, it's our responsibility to keep it internally drained and, and keep those piles stabilized at all times, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And you wanted to say, it says, the topsoil from the site site will be stockpiled for future reclamation. You want to say all the topsoil from the site will be stockpiled? Do you want to add the word all in there?
Yes.
Okay, that would be great. Okay, two point eight.
Yep.
Refueling of equipment. So in this. Okay, you're going to have a thousand gallon fuel tank, so motors and equipment that can drive are going to drive up there to get fueled, but like excavators are going to be fueled in the extraction area?
Correct.
From like a pickup truck, sort of, or?
Yeah, it'd be a pickup truck with a hundred gallon tank on it, yeah.
And you could have that on pad, concrete, like the fuel tanks would be on a concrete pad related.
Yeah, that is, uh, specified in the spill plan and.
So we will see a spill.
We have it.
We've got one.
We do have it, yeah.
Yes, it's here.
And did the pad get onto the?
Down on the site plan?
Yeah. So when you're, when you're refueling in the field, you're going to put down some sort of, what do you?
They're going to top off your tanks.
Yeah, so you're just going to put something under there.
Correct, yeah.
Little year trucks, be equipped with the spill response kits and you just have 55 gallon drums on site.
The.
Because if there's a spill, then you got to say, okay, well, I'm over here and we go back to my 55 gallon drum.
Hmm, you know, there should be one located at like the screener, the crusher.
Spill response kits will always be maintained outside of all stationary.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great. And all your, all your equipment takes diesel, pretty much?
It does, yeah, no straight gas.
So any other fluids you're gonna be in the maintenance building?
Um, like oil, antifreeze, um, you know.
Might top those things off in the field.
Yeah, just for, yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially just the fluids that you need for maintenance.
Yeah, yeah. 2.9 noise?
Yep. Your fuel tank will be an above-ground tank or will be buried?
Above.
Have to be on a pad anyway.
Yeah, with spill containment, and, yeah.
It's gonna be protected by anything in case someone hits it.
This is the roof over it. Have a lean to, a budding it. The maintenance garage will have a lean to, a budding it.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't mean to go back.
Yeah.
No, it's all right, I mean, there's a lot here.
Oh, yeah.
There are details in the plan, so.
Um, that's a good idea, just to make sure that we have either jersey barriers or ballards, I'd say. Yeah. We can make sure that we have that.
Anything on noise?
All the good neighbors call.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, they have a big property, so.
Blasting, you said, no blasting. 2.10. 2.11.
Um, that was kind of the water truck, and is you, what is your source of water gonna be? Is it gonna be the well at the maintenance building, you think?
Yeah, that would make the most sense.
Yeah, the easiest. Did you give any thought to the, um, having a second well by the ponds for the wash plant? Is, you think that's gonna be necessary, have we?
I think it would be, I don't think it's gonna be needed all the time, but I think it would be beneficial. For example, you have one of those really, really dry summers and you just need water.
Yeah.
Um, I think it would be very beneficial to have just one well located in the vicinity of the wash plant.
Okay.
Could use, yeah.
So you'll get that on the plan?
Yes.
We're gonna have to put fences around the wash.
Um, we're gonna get to the two more pages, and we're, yeah, I kind of, I a little bit skipped ahead, but it's hard to. Okay, so anything about dust and erosion?
No. 2.12, sequence. This is what you were talking about earlier, Gavin.
Yes, exactly. So, sequence of operations. So we already covered number one, which was the stakes delineating everything. You'll put it right in here, the 50, 50 feet apart metal stakes. Yeah, I guess, um, number three, um, how, you know, just wondering, you know, how many acres you're gonna clear, how many acres you were gonna grub, you know, maybe we could have a little bit of detail in here. You know, because it just says, "Clear area of trees and other vegetation," which is fine, but it could be, you could be talking about the 40 acres, you could be just talking about the, any amount.
I guess, yeah, we don't know.
You're not sure.
Delineation, I mean, it's gonna be within that area, right? But they mark it out.
Right, well, I mean, maybe, maybe we don't care, I guess, but.
They really can't tell until they.
Well, they, they can tell us if they're gonna, if they're gonna, you know, to harvest the full 40 acres.
I think you're, it sounds like, are you gonna like, do like a five-acre phase and a five-acre phase and a five-acre phase? Reclaim as you go, or are you gonna do all 40 up once and reclaim everything and do another 40? Is that what you're asking?
Kind, yeah, pretty much.
It's, it's hard to tell until you actually get out there and.
Right, well, because you're gonna be operating in multiple places.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you're selling that in the actual working area? I mean, clear area, trees over there, take grub and stumps, clear area.
I'm just kind of wondering how much.
It's not gonna be like, we do 40 acres and then fully reclaim it and then move over to another area. It's gonna be more like, you know, you have 30 acres open, you're getting 10 acres reclaimed. Once that area is reclaimed, then you open up another 10, you're kind of hop stepping your way along as you go, if that makes sense.
So you're gonna wait till you have 10 acres before you start reclaiming? 10 acres excavated, like, fully?
I will not exceed 40 acres of open area at any given point in time. Um, will I have 40 acres open? Probably not all the time, um, the, just certain circumstances, I guess, where you might need to have that amount open, where you have some silt over here, you have some sand over here, you got some rocky material over there, and you're trying to do three different things at once. But for the most part, the material out there is pretty consistent. Um, it's, it's all, towards H Road, it's more rocky, it's a little dirtier. It's, that's probably more gonna be like crushed gravels and four-inch minuses.
Yeah.
So, you shouldn't need to open up a significant amount of that area near the H Road at any given time.
Are you gonna, like, are you gonna grub all of Extraction Area Number One at once? Or are you gonna periodically move through it?
We're gonna periodically move through it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not gonna just jump in there and strip the whole thing, because we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot on the other side of the pit where we might want to have a little bit more open acreage over there for the screening plant to be set up and for stockpiles of sand.
And if you grub, you've got to stabilize it.
If you grub.
You don't want to have to stabilize it before.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any slopes on-site have to be reclaimed within six months. If you have, you cannot leave a slope denuded, like, or, or grubbed. All slopes have to be reclaimed within a given time period. But anything that's on, you know, the flat base of the gravel pit, um, there's no specific time period. And from my experience, if you start to try to tell an operator that, you know, you can only do this area, then you gotta move to this area, then you gotta move to this area, it just doesn't work out from a business perspective. It's impossible to follow it. Then you're back at the planning board and you're saying, "Oh, man, I gotta go to two, I'm not done in one yet, can you change?" I've, I've seen that in Stanford, and it's just unbelievable how complete, how complicated and complex it makes it.
I think we're just trying to get a sense of, of, and you said, oh, it's gonna be sequenced work.
Sequenced, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you want to put something about the slopes in there?
It is in there.
Okay.
I can't remember.
Five or something.
2.5, yeah. That's a DEP requirement, yeah.
2.5, okay, so we got there, yeah. Oh, no.
That's a slope.
Oh, 2, oh, yeah, I was thinking, because I'm in 2.1.
Anything on 2, anything else on 2.12?
I think, I think we previously talked about 10-foot berm here at S15, we'll correct it to be 10. All right.
No, it's hard to know, because it depends on how much loam there is, right?
Um, we have enough loam for either a 10 or 15-foot berm.
Minimum 10.
Minimum 10.
Minimum 10.
Yeah.
Well, how, how tall can your machine make the berm?
15 feet.
Is this convenient?
20 feet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, it says, strip topsoil from cleared area, stockpile topsoil within the working pit. But that's gonna, that's gonna be generally the rule. But you might move some to the processing area just to get space?
Yeah, possibly. Yeah.
Okay. The berm. Okay, Aquifer Protection District.
Can take out that second paragraph, right, because we agreed.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, 2.1.
Well, you could say, I'd like, I'd like it if it said, "Or not process any wood waste or imported materials in the Aquifer Protection District." I'd like to keep that in there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But, but, yeah, we can get rid of some of that, the burying.
What was that, Gavin? Because I was writing down removing.
Um, under the Town of Aquifer, Act in Aquifer Protection District.
No importing materials in the Aquifer Protection District?
Uh, that was already in there.
No, it's not the buried stuffs.
Will not process any wood waste.
Or other.
Because that stuff's from on-site, or other imported materials. So I'd like to keep that in there, but let's get rid of the burying altogether. On-site maintenance garage and refueling area.
Is that the final size of the building? Because that changed a few times, too.
I think that's shown on the plan right now.
80 by 60?
80 by 60, yeah.
Because you're pretty.
It says, I think it says here that we will, our building will be no larger than 80 by 60.
80 by 60 here?
Yeah.
And there's a concrete pad for a dumpster up there, and then the concrete pad for the fueling and the tank directly just to the base. And then I switched the holding tank side and the well side, just the, because the holding tank was on the backside of the, like, page north or page up, but I didn't want, then the well would have been over by the AST, and I didn't want that, so we put the well away all the way from the holding tank and the AST, the, the.
Oh, okay.
Gas storage tank, or diesel storage tank.
Yeah.
2.14 going once.
Right, let's keep it moving.
2.15, portable launch plant. This talks about the berm, and I think we've given you some feedback. We didn't think that was sufficient. And the ordinance actually calls for a fence.
Electrified.
One of those T-Rex fences. Welded wire, Jurassic Park.
Barbed wire?
Raise that one.
Yeah.
Raise the wire, we're electrified.
Keep those kids, keep those kids out.
You just look at like a chain link fence, what are we, what are you looking for? What does the ordinance, it just says a fence.
It just says, "If any stinging water can reach, site must be fenced in a manner to get adequate to keep children out."
Fence will be constructed around the wash ponds.
They chain link. Chain link.
Yeah.
Is that a fence in lieu of the berm?
No berm, just a fence.
No, yeah, no berm.
When we discussed the, the function of the berm and whether or not, how it would.
Run off from getting.
Yeah, stormwater. And how, how, you know, and that kind of ties into how the processing area is gonna be drained and, um, I, I mean, it seems like a good idea to direct stormwater into the ponds. Um, and the, the berm might prevent that.
Yeah, good point, water can flow through the fence, yeah.
And then, so it says the, so you're gonna be, you're gonna be 10 feet above the water table? So the bottom of the pond is gonna be 10 feet above the highest recorded groundwater level?
Yes.
Okay. Is that gonna work?
Five.
It says the minimum, is, is allowed or the maximum?
Try five.
Try five?
It says five.
Five.
It says 10.
Yeah. Oh, it should be five.
DEP is five, right?
Yeah, DEP is five feet.
Yeah, I guess five.
I don't know why.
I would suggest, on the next version of this, you have a date or a version number or something.
Oh, you just marked one, definitely different order than you usually do.
Gavin's probably working on first operation manual.
Those blocks, we have them estimated prior to July.
No, I mean, I, I got the same thing, it's not the Libby tip one.
The second part, it says, the entire area.
There was a couple of them?
Yeah, there's one that came up first.
They're very similar, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Came up in July.
I think we're okay, but.
All of your comments have been
They relate to both.
Very relevant to the version I have. I, I think there's some slight differences.
Okay, so you want.
March, one of July.
I think, I think five might work better in terms of the stormwater, too.
It would, it'd be lower, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, we still wanted to discuss what you were gonna line the ponds with. I know you wanted to do silt or clay liner, and we were kind of hemming and hawing about whether or not a fabric liner would be beneficial just to prevent sedimentation into the aquifer.
Makes it tough to dig them out.
Right.
Yeah, because you're gonna be catching that.
Well, but how much sediment do you allow before you dredge it out?
I mean, two, three feet.
So if you had three feet and you had an excavator bucket without teeth on it, would that work?
Uh, yeah.
You just leave some in there?
I don't even have an excavator bucket without teeth on.
If we, you know, if we lined it with clay, six inches of clay in the bottom, that would prevent, prevent any.
I'm, I'm kind of curious about just overdigging the thing.
That's for those fancy-worthware guys.
And, and going below the five feet. Like, how?
It's funny how many excavator operators they get, and like.
Like, if you had a PVC liner, we might puncture it.
Yeah, well, you could put, you could put your six inches of clay on top of the liner.
Yeah, that's like, it's.
I'd trust the clay more than I would the liner.
Because the liner does puncture, but you, you still have clay.
Right, but the liner sets your depth at the five feet above the water table. I'm just trying to figure out how to determine when you're dredging it. Yeah, that, that's gonna be you.
Well, that's what I would think.
Get your goggles. No, but how do we know when you've dredged out to the five feet? You see what I'm saying? Well, you know, now I'm digging clay out, we must be there, but it's like.
If you start, if you.
If you can come up with some way to accurately, um, determine how deeply you're dredging, just, that, that would help with worries, too, because I just feel like, you know, we might, we might end up overdredging the thing.
This is a question for the African, or Jason. Is, is that height above groundwater enforced locally?
State.
Or it's like an annual inspection or something like that?
It is a state permit, but I wanted to say it was also an area.
Yeah.
Is it up to a local code officer to go out and try and figure that out?
I don't think we have anything about these sort of ponds in the ordinance.
I think it's just five feet above ground, no matter what.
For the excavation, for the excavation area, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't have anything about ponds.
Right.
Like, most everything, so.
You know, whereas, whereas in the excavation site, you have your wells, you know how deep you are, what your buffer is.
I saw something here about a test every spring to verify the water table.
Yes, yeah, every spring, we're going out there and we're actually measuring every one of the wells. And DEP also says, on top of the wells, that you are responsible for putting, like, looking at groundwater levels in every five-acre parcel on-site, so.
So one well per five acres is what?
No, I don't know. You would, you'd dig a test pit, yeah, you see where the water level's at, right? And then you can survey it and you can tell. Right, and then you can survey it and you can tell. Yeah, because they certainly can adjust.
How many?
Yeah, they can, yeah.
How many permanent monitoring wells, is that in here?
Three, three out there.
Just three. Well, I mean, during the process of the lifetime of the pit. You know, because you can just put a PVC pipe in and then move it when you.
Four. Sorry.
Four?
There's four monitoring wells inside, yeah.
So that's, there's one in each extraction area and one in the processing area?
There's two in extraction area, one, there's, and then there's one in, um, two and three. Yeah.
I think, I think in the past we've asked for, you know, the, every two acres you have a well and then you move it. It's just a pipe put in, you just dig a hole, stick the PVC pipe in.
Oh, like a pisa meter, just like a PVC? Yeah, yeah.
Isn't that pretty similar to what we saw on the sidewalk?
No, the ones that, that were installed, they were actually drilled in, air pounded in.
Yeah.
With the casing on the outside and had a lot of problems with folders and stuff, but I think typically it's done just with verification in the pit, at the pit floor with excavator. Tell them the depth and then saying, "We've got six feet, let's not go out any deeper. We're at two feet, like, we need to backfill and we can't be this close."
So maybe you could just put, put a monitoring well or a couple, like, couple next to the ponds?
That's not, you know, that's not a bad idea, just to, yeah.
Just so you can.
A few PVC pipes near the ponds to.
I'm not sure how else you would, you would, um, keep, keep an eye on the, the bottom of the ponds. Depth, so to speak. I mean, if this, there's got to be some better way to do it, but. All right, um, anything else on the wash plant?
All roads.
Didn't that culvert look to be squished when we were there?
It was getting there, wasn't it?
You, you plan on replacing the culvert on the stream crossing?
I don't think so. No. I, I tried to cross that thing with an excavator and I felt perfectly comfortable. I didn't, I didn't feel it give at all, I didn't feel any movement, um. I, I think it's adequate.
Is the, the road in that area wide enough for what you need to do?
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty, it is pretty wide, it's, uh, it's wide enough for two vehicles.
If we do replace it, we'd have, we'd have a PBR.
Yeah.
A PBR for culvert replacement, basically.
Right.
Then would you put another culvert in or would you do one of those cement forms that allows the natural stream bottom?
I would have to take that up at the time, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Either or would work, I'd probably be a fan of the concrete with the natural bottom.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, my grandfather did that at the, um.
Good for Fish Passage.
Yeah.
So this will be reworded, because I think I still love, oh, I guess culvert slash bridge thing.
Right, just, yeah, just, yeah, make it clear that it's not a bridge.
Seventeen.
Tree growth plan? Yeah, I mean, that's your, you'll have to figure that out. You're going to, you're in tree growth now?
Yes.
So you're going to.
Take it out?
Take it out and pay back taxes or whatever you got to do and.
Right.
And you're going to have a new plan for the remaining acreage?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. This one, the second paragraph says stump grunnings and mulch will not be used as a reclamation material. I'd like to see you use, use some of the wood for reclamation, just to add organic matter.
I, I agree with that, the reason why that's written that way is, um, this planning director in Sanford is adamantly against it for reasons I do not understand, because it works out great, you know?
Yeah.
Can we just reword that like can be used? Yeah.
Or just get rid of that sentence, you know? So that, so that it's, it's up to you if you use it or not, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like to see you put it right in there that, that, you know, a certain pers, yeah, a certain percentage of the stump's ground are used, but I don't know how.
Just they can be used.
Or, or some, some stumps will be used for reclamation material.
I mean, I, I think you'd want to avoid a situation like you're talking about earlier where if it's all wood and then it is, you know.
It's too much.
Right, I mean. I, that's probably the simplest way is to say no wood, but I understand what you're saying is if it's mixed in with loam or if it's, you're making loam or something, uh, I don't know. I mean, it feels like it's really getting into the.
Well, the way this is kind of worded, used as reclamation material.
Well, you think about it.
In, in the case that it's going to be mixed up or made up to be. Right.
And I think that, that might be problematic if it's just the reclamation material as opposed to like mixed in with reclamation material.
Yeah. Well, when you think about a natural ecosystem, the wood falls and the rotting wood holds moisture, provides habitat. You know, it helps, you know, if you had some wood on top of the loam, it would help.
Right.
So.
I, I, takes a while, but it, that's where it ends up.
Yeah, but it's good at slow release, so you have, you have it there as the plants grow. Um, so if we could just at least give you the option of using it, you know?
There's still a lot of bite.
It's about the place to live.
Yeah, well, I mean, think about how many organisms are going to be displaced. You know, if they can put back some habitat as they leave, even if it was just like stumps around on, on top of the loam would still be providing shade, moisture retention, um, you know.
We could move on to.
Yeah.
White pines.
Not to cut you off Gavin, but.
Okay, um, so the next, spruce?
Yeah, yeah, really nice pine trees, not these stupid ones.
Okay.
Wait, what is he saying?
Three point two.
Talking about operators planting their planting trees, white pines.
Just pine trees.
Yeah, pines for pine, blue spruce.
Timing of reclamation.
Am I going to add that?
No, there's no, no blue spruce. There's no blue spruce listed in here, it's not a native species and when we went and looked at your reclamation pit at west, at, uh,
West Shore Drive?
Yeah, uh, on Square Pond, the boat launch.
Yeah.
Red pines looked way more like a habitat and an ecosystem than the spruces. Remember there was like, there's the stand of red pines?
Yeah.
And those, there was other vegetation growing under them.
Yeah, I do remember.
And it was a more diverse ecosystem, whereas you had the like blue spruces planted, it just looked like a bunch of Christmas trees and then people came and cut them down as Christmas trees. And it wasn't as much of an ecosystem.
Okay.
Um, so I'd like to see native species, um, all the ones you got listed are great.
I don't know.
And.
You just say native species, that's fine.
We just put native.
And then, well, I think the species that are existent there now would be some of the best ones to put back. But pines do well in, in well-drained soils, because they have the shallow roots, so they, you know, when you're trying to put an oak back in a gravel pit, it doesn't grow nearly as well as a pine tree.
You have thirty-five acres.
I see that.
Will not include thirty, will not, more than thirty-five acres, do you want to change that?
It's forty. That's going to be forty, yeah.
And I'd like to see, it says may also plant. I'd like to see it says well, well-plant native species of trees at twenty by twenty spacing.
Across the whole site?
Yeah, that's what's there now is trees, I mean, we're talking trees this big, little saplings, not, not full-size trees. That's what we, that's what we talked about.
I tried to find those saplings a year ago and I couldn't even find them, we used to buy them up in Freiburg, I think.
Well, another thing we've done in the past too is if you can get the trees to grow there within five years at this twenty by twenty spacing, just by seeding, by planting, by letting the native trees come in, then you don't have to do it. But like out in the middle of the pit, there isn't going to be a source of seed for the trees to grow, so I think, I'd like to see.
Some pine, I'll tell.
He, well, that works.
Yeah.
That would work.
I call the seats.
That's actually, we have that as a, listed in McCoy's notes, is that they can, they can put that down.
I, I think maybe you should probably require, um, trees to be planted along the slope of budding West Shore Drive. And maybe along the slope on the H Road, but requiring it across the entire gravel pit is, it's quite a lot.
Well, we require reclamation and when we went in there in the sidewalk, I didn't see any grass anywhere. And your proposal to put back.
I'll write up some.
Non-native species on the whole site, I'd like to see.
That's, I mean, that's.
I mean, reclamation is typically, uh, is conservation, I don't think.
Right, well, that's what, exactly what I'm saying, DEP is asking you to put non-native species in and I'm asking you to put native species in there. Which, you look, we went on the sidewalk, what's in there now, it's trees. So, I mean, it makes sense to me that we would put the forest back when we were done.
You put down, yeah.
So maybe you can give some consideration.
Yeah.
So maybe come up with some of the areas that you're going to do that in, you know, and get that proposed.
I would propose.
That's what we did for Hanson Pond, you were happy with it then.
I did Hanson Pond.
Mm-hmm.
So there's ten feet of all, change it to five.
And I got the twenty by twenty spacing, you can write that down.
Right.
Okay, are we on to three point two, is that what you, did you guys go ahead for that while I was talking?
Yeah, Jason did.
We, we've said the wash plant is open area, right?
Yes.
So that has to change. And then we're going to do forty instead of thirty-five.
And then he's got ten feet above groundwater and then it should be five.
Yeah. Anything else?
Well, I think the, the process, I would, I'd like to see the processing area is ten feet above the groundwater. It's the ponds and the bottom of the ponds is five feet. So I'd like that, I like the ten feet. They're going to need some slope anyway to get the water to drain that way. Because it's not an excavation area.
Oh yeah, it's a different thing, isn't it?
Well, I mean Gavin, we're not bringing in the concrete and asphalt anymore, so.
I'm just, we've got two more pages here, so. I'm just, just going over what I have written on the sheet, two more pages. And it's what you have, ten feet, so I don't know.
Yeah, we'd like to change it to five feet, um, and basically the same as the, uh, extraction area separation.
I'm just saying, how, how are you going to have the thing internally drained to, to this ponds that are, the bottom of the ponds, five feet above the water table, if you're five feet everywhere?
Well, we'd like to just have some areas be, not everything's going to drain above the pond.
So what are you going to do with the soil, so you're going to excavate some soil out of the processing area to get down to the five feet in the whole thing, so it is going to be an excavation area?
No, I'm just saying, we'd like, if, if the, if we get out there and the water table's at five feet, I mean, we, or if it's, you know, if it's at six feet, we need to scrape off the top soil, prepare the site. I think then we're within five feet of the table, or within five feet of the surface.
Sure.
Five feet. Yeah, that's.
But I don't, I don't think that it's going to, the whole thing's going to come down in twenty feet. It's not, it's not the intent, it's.
Well, what is, what is your existing depth of the water table in the processing area now?
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, can you get us that information?
Uh, we can estimate it.
Sure. Okay. On the next paragraph, this is your slopes.
Anything?
Well, that's all I had there.
Three point three.
The guarantee, so we just have to kind of.
Six grand.
Six. We're happy with that? Six.
We've got to change the first figure. We're, we're going with six thousand an acre, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, unless you wanted the twelve that you wanted earlier.
But, so this is for the.
Yeah, I'll sell you on the twelve.
For the pit.
You know, I had a.
For the open area.
Open area.
Our last gravel pit around H Road, we had a bond in place with the town, we never had to give you guys cold hard cash.
Hey.
The. Well, if you bring in evidence of that, we can present that to the selectmen.
I think the. I have to go to, we have to go to the selectmen where you go, and we have to try to get them. Right now it's set at only cash escrow, so.
Yeah.
You want to change just through the selectmen.
Yeah, bring us proof that you did a bond before.
You want evidence of that, I will.
Yeah, bring it in.
Ordinance says you can do one of three methods.
Right.
But it's up to the board to work with you on the exact form of that guarantee.
Yeah, and you've been, you've been working with us well on all these other things, I think.
Oh.
This is your heads up, that the select board is going to want cash. And if you want to push back on that and say the ordinance allows other things, that's beyond the scope of this review.
I don't think so, no, I think if, no, we can set whatever we want, the selectmen are overstating their bounds with that.
The dollar amount is set by the board.
Set by the planning board.
The form of the guarantee is set by the select board.
Right, that's right in the ordinance, where is that?
Yeah, they need to.
We don't need to go whip that up, there are, Ben just said there's three forms. We actually made a ordinance change proposal that didn't go forward.
No, I'm just looking for who sets that, I know there's three. I'm trying to remember where it is. I'm trying to help them out.
No, I got it.
Help me find it in the ordinance and get it done.
Okay, anyway, I'm at this performance guarantee we have here permitting working. Yeah.
I'd be fine with it.
I'll give you two seconds.
It's two hundred thousand.
I'm looking right now, yeah.
How am I supposed to cover that? You think I just have that kicking around?
I'm not trying to drag it out, I'm trying to get to it.
Yeah, maybe Kyle will front it to me.
People started getting frustrated.
Ninety-six of the people.
Well, it's just.
I already sold my house. Do you want me to, do you want me to give you the title of my house?
Me?
Matt, if you bring in that heavens of the bond, I'll do everything I can to help you with that.
I will, yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. You find it?
Yeah, that's a lot of cash.
That's on page ninety-one.
Yep, oh, I'm on page a hundred.
Yeah, that's really, maybe.
Page ninety-one of the ordinance is page ninety-six of the.
Right.
Performance guarantee, yes.
It's confusing.
Like you said, we don't set that standard, how they want to get paid, which is.
It's the planning board.
Yeah, I don't see anything about the selectmen.
But there's three, there's three options though, he was.
There was.
There was, but there isn't anymore.
I'm just saying, what was, what I.
No, they didn't.
Was the selectmen eliminated?
It's not what happened, that's what they're telling you happened. All right, I think we're all set with that.
I'd have to change a lot. All right, compliance, four point oh, four point one, site inspections, anything?
Nope.
I had no comments on the compliance section.
Gavin?
No, it looks fine.
Four point two?
We covered that? I think we already talked about the monitored wells and maybe adding some more, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And four point three, I'm not sure. Four point two, if we could get a number, maybe put something in there about wells next, you know, how many wells?
This, this is saying quality, which is testing of the water.
Oh, quality monitoring, yeah, okay.
This is not quality.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Transfer of extraction rights?
It might be helpful to have the number that are around, but, okay.
Well, we could, I'd like to have a number of wells, but maybe this isn't the right place to put it.
Yeah, be on the chart. Um, the transfer of rights thing, again, this is an issue where, um, you're making a statement about we'll do, what we'll do. Like the operator will not be required to get a new permit, I don't know if that should be there. I mean, new operator will have to. I mean, new operator will have to deal with the town.
We don't need to, do we?
No, I like that, that they, that they, that you change hands, the new operator has to come to the, to the code officer and to the board.
I've had the discussion with the, with town attorney and conditions run of the land is what he was, I was told, and in our ordinance as of right now, it does not require the new property owner to come and work land work.
Okay, but some conditions don't have to do with the land, such as the insurance provided by the new operator, that should be provided, you know, and, um, there was a couple other things, but I, I'm happy that they have that in there. Don't take it out.
No, I'm not.
I think you might take it out.
Okay, don't do that.
You don't like that?
I don't like the fact that they're saying the operator doesn't, the new operator doesn't have to come to the town.
Does or doesn't?
Does not, doesn't.
Oh no, it says the new operator...
Read the last sentence.
The new operator must first return to the town and act in code officer's confirmation that the operator is adequate technical and financial capacity to operate the gravel.
The most important thing is...
The operator will not be required to get a new permit, oh, I think he should get a new permit too.
Right, that's my point.
Nah.
That sentence shouldn't be in there.
Yeah, so you're gonna take the last, the very last sentence out?
That's the problem I'm having with other...
Yeah, it really, if that's not in line with the ordinance, it really shouldn't be.
Just take it out, yeah.
Change his ownership.
Don't, don't say they do or don't, just leave it up to the town.
Right.
The new operator.
Right, just delete last sentence, we're good.
Okay?
Okay, no, fine.
Great.
Get it, got it?
Alright.
Kind of with the whole, the conditions run of the land. Well, take that last line.
No, I'm, well, the...
They're not required to get a new extract for... Matt wants to sell the day after we, he wants to sell, then the next person gets his permit.
Right.
This is what the, that's just that last line.
But they still have to come to the town.
I, I would be fine if...
They have to show, they have to show proof of liability and insurance and some other thing.
They'd have to establish a bond that you...
They have to get the bond, the performance guarantee.
Yeah.
But it's not like they were gonna come to the town.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing...
No, no, unless they want to change it.
Right.
Time out, time out, one conversation, Ben, what were you gonna say?
Uh, there's, there's nothing to build, there's the, the, the most important thing here, and I would say it would be fine to replace that last paragraph and just say the new owner would have to have a performance guarantee in place, they would have to show the insurance and show the guarantee. There, there's no financial and technical capacity, I don't think, because you're not building a new subdivision road, you're not building new public infrastructure, it's just you're operating a pit, it's like you don't have to do that when you buy a retail store or anything else, it's just, in this case, whoever owns it needs to make sure that they're reclaiming it properly and if they don't do that, then that guarantee's there for the town to have it done.
Yes, yes.
Pretty much, I would have to agree to this operations manual.
All, all of the approval criteria would...
Transfer to them.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you, I know that was pretty tedious, but it was very helpful, I think, that we understand what we need to make for revisions. When we change the operations manual, we'll submit like a, a, one document that's track changes, that shows you all of our edits, cause it's just, I think it's easier for everybody, this is what we crossed out, this is what we added, and then there'll be one clean version as well, so...
Can you do me? Just scan those.
Huh?
If they're, if you can read them, we just... Yeah, I'll, did you... So Ben and I both took notes, so we'll compare what we have, uh, and submit them to you guys.
Thank you.
So everybody's kinda...
Yeah, that's awesome, that's really, yeah.
I think this is a good session.
I do too.
It's tedious, but I, we made some progress.
I do too, I agree.
So, you need to get some permits before you get approval, is what it sounded like earlier, is what the board was asking for? Yeah, yeah. So, do you guys wanna come in, not the next meeting, the following, we'll give you guys some time to do that? Sure, we've been over this pretty extensive, so when we got, Ben's gonna go up the memo, I'll, I'll go talk with him, have some conversations about what I have and what he has, um, we'll submit it to you, we'll send it to you guys, you guys work on your permits?
Yeah.
Come back on the...
I mean, can you commit to a day right now, or you just need, you'll schedule the meeting whenever, if it's a month, like two months or...
Yeah, come back when you're ready, yeah, we'll fit you in.
We'll be ready by two meetings from now, so...
I'll fit in like Christmas time.
That's when we're here, the first...
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, so, we'll let you know.
Take a break from this for the next meeting.
Yes.
We'll give you a break, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, guys.
Is that like drum?
Second.
All in favor?
What do we have on the agenda for next time, anything?
Uh, sidewalk.
And that's it?
And then right now, that is it.
That's the only one, huh?
Uh-huh.
That's it?
That's it.
So do we wanna discuss some possible changes to the zoning ordinance, we wanna throw...